Twenty twenty, um, uh, would like to begin the meeting by asking you to join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation under indivisible with liberty and justice for all. That got a little confusing there. Thank you very much, everybody. Before we get started with anything, I just would really like to send some good energy and prayers out to the people who are dealing with the fires today, to all the firefighters to California, putting themselves on the line to keep us safe and keep them in our thoughts and prayers. So with that, I'll go to good morning, C A O Nielsen, or are there any changes to the agenda?
Good morning, sir. I guess there's changes to the agenda. Item C twelve, Supervisor Madron would like to pull for discussion. Items E twenty eight is being pulled by the department and will be brought back at a later date. And there are corrections to item C twenty eight, attachment one, conditions of approval, number one, under the conditions of approval. The second line, it should be twenty twenty five and not twenty thirty five. Fourth line, under the first condition of approval, should be twenty twenty four and not twenty thirty four. And along that same line, it should be twenty twenty five and not twenty thirty five. And that would conclude the modifications to the agenda that I am aware of.
Okay. Thank you. Um, any questions or motion on the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent items excluding C twelve, E twenty eight, and with the amendments to C twenty eight as listed by the C A O.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any public comment on the consent agenda? Again, this is a virtual meeting, as we all know, and you can call the numbers on the screen and then you can press star nine if you wish to speak. Well, first of all, Council Billingsley, you had your hand up.
I just wanted to confirm that the modifications were to which agenda item?
I believe it was.
C twenty eight.
C twenty eight. Do I have that correct?
I believe this item is being pulled.
No, I think that's C twelve.
C twelve. Twelve was pulled, C twenty eight.
C twenty eight is being brought back and being, there were one item pulled for discussion and one item being pulled for a future meeting.
Yep.
Can, can you clarify?
Changes on, C A O Nielsen, can you read that, that through again, please?
Oh, I don't. I only had C twenty eight being pulled for discussion and corrections to C twenty eight.
What? Try that one more time.
We had C twelve for discussion, correct?
All being pulled for discussion and C twenty eight with correction.
Okay.
Also for discussion.
No?
No, I believe C twenty eight is being pulled for a future meeting.
Oh, well, I think John Ford may have more information than.
Uh, Director Ford?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it was C twenty six that was being corrected, the all points outdoor appeal.
Thank you.
So my apologies. My apologies, it's C twenty six and not C twenty eight. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Right. As a motion maker, I'll try one more time to clarify if I may.
Thank you.
Approve the, the consent agenda, removing C twelve and E and C twenty eight, excuse me, and then having corrections made to C twenty six. And that's as, as listed by the, by the C A O. Is that, is that clear enough?
Yes, that's clear enough. And if anybody has questions, the corrections are most often dealing with dates.
I apologize for a bit of glitchiness on my end. I'm actually in the office today and, and the wifi in here is not so great on my end of the building. So it'll be a little glitchy for me until I switch to another computer.
It's not so hot on this side of the building either.
Mine works fine, so, but if we could go into the chambers, it always works when we're in person.
That's, that's for sure. Okay. Um, all right. So are we all clear before we take any public comment on everything? So C twenty eight is pulled and C twenty, C twelve is pulled for discussion and we have minor adjustments on C twenty six. And we believe we have two people who wish to speak to the items on the agenda, on the consent agenda. So welcome to the first caller and that would be ending in seven, four, five, four.
I still have Ken Sowoski, top of the morning to you. And again, our, our thoughts go out to all the people out there who were speaking to one person a little while ago and didn't have time to speak because they're fighting fires to preserve their home. I did wish to make comment, when, when you have item twenty six all points and you're making changes, we don't know what your changes are. There's no way for the public to know. Normally, if we were in the chamber, like was just suggested, we would find that over on the table to the right as you went in. We don't have a clue. And I was making comment on that one. I, I'm not a lawyer, but on all points, I think that, I think that the offer proposed to them was ridiculous and, and they're going to hold, and they're going to sign a whole harmless indemnification clause to preclude them from running more than five years. I don't think that is a chance of a snowball. And I think you've, you've done kind of a deal there that is kind of going to end up coming back in your lap with litigation, but I'm not their attorney. Number item twenty two, it appears that there are twenty one positions in Humboldt County, as near as I can tell, you are having to reclassify to bring up to minimum wage. I cannot understand why the county has policies to go ahead and to have living wage jobs in yet twenty one positions. Maybe I'm wrong, but that's all I can tell is happening on that particular one. See, conflict of interest has been pulled. That's a great thing. I wish to talk on that a little bit later. Um, all points. Uh, there's a, you're reclassifying county council, library services and, and the health officer. And it, for some reason, it just says, um, the county Humboldt acting through representative and, basically, it, it appears that since these positions are not currently filled too, which may be filled a little bit later today, I don't know if you're reclassifying these for, for what purpose. It says there's no financial impact. Well, usually when you classify, reclassify things, there is more money or less money being paid to those people. That's what I've common seen, that people in the prior topic that was going through in that manner, as far as I could tell. So I don't know how there could be no financial impact. We keep having these things that say no financial impact, even though the financial impact may come later. So sure be nice to get accurate staff reports on financial impact because that's where I go first thing. So, uh, thank you for my opportunity to speak on these particular consent items.
Thank you, Kent. Uh, I believe we have two other with their hands raised. This is number two, three zero five three, welcome.
Good morning. Thomas Mulder, I just wanted a quick point of clarification. Is C twenty four still on the consent agenda? Is that what I heard?
C twenty four, yes, is on the consent agenda.
Okay. So I'm, I, I emailed all of you as well as the director yesterday. I'm highly opposed to this. I've stated many reasons in my email. I'll go over a couple of them for the public. Number one is I think the reclassification, the county should hold that discretion until the appropriate project is brought forward. The other big one is you're condoning bad behavior. That property has continued to illegally fill that parcel for the last five years of more than fifty yards a year. And I think by, by going forward with trying to propose this or accept this rezoning without a project in place is, is going to potentially negatively impact the Bimbo Valley entrance. And it's, it's promoting bad behavior and I cannot believe it was not pulled for discussion, at least. I'm really, really sad that it was not pulled. I, and I, as a landowner in Bimbo, I don't know what to do to, to fight it because I don't think it's appropriate. You're, you're basically just accepting bad behavior and that company has continued to act with bad behavior to building codes that we have in place, rules that we have in place. And I guess I'm just going to start emailing all of those to everyone. So I, I, I urge you to deny that. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Thomas. Next caller is with the seven zero three three, that's your last four, I think. And you, you may have to press star six on your phone in order to speak. If you're a member, yes, welcome.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me? This is Dr. Caroline Connor.
Absolutely. Good morning, doctor.
Okay. Good morning. Um, I, I'm, I'm calling because I want to make a reference to a few things or just really one thing that some of those supervisors were concerned about and I wanted to take their concern very, very seriously. And the issue was with the effect of not being in-person classrooms and what the quarantine has on children.
Oh.
So I, I went.
Excuse me.
I went to the book.
Excuse me, doctor. This is comment on the consent agenda. We'll be talking about the COVID emergency right after this. So that's when it would be appropriate.
I'm so sorry. So when, when, how should I do this again? I just mute and then wait?
Yeah, exactly.
And do I have?
Or yeah, you can call back in. Either way, uh, we will be talking about that. That is the very next item on the agenda. All right. Uh, I believe we have some more public comment and just let me remind people that the public comment right now is on items that are on the consent agenda. If you wish to speak on items on the consent agenda, um, I do see three, three hands up. One is three, six, seven, eight. Good morning. You need to press, okay, I, I have a feeling some of these are not on the consent agenda, but the next one is five, two, nine, nine. Do you wish to speak to items on the consent agenda?
Yes. Hi, this is Drew Redd, the business agent for Ask Me What's a sixteen eighty-four, the Public Employees Union. Um, I wanted to speak to item twenty two and human resources and just were, expressed that we're happy that this is now happening, um, but really just draw attention to the fact that this item is something that was discussed first with the interim human resources director and assistant director back in November of last year and that we had outlined this model in the year prior and it's taken this long to get this done. So I just wanted to throw that out there that we're thankful to be getting it done and hopefully we can get all the corrections and everything made, um, with this moving forward. Um, but I, I'd like everyone to understand that this has been, was discussed back in November of last year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Drew. And we do have one other person with their hand up and your number is zero, one, five, zero, the last four of your number.
Yes. Hello, hello, everybody. This is Dottie Russell from SOCOM. I wanted to tell you, we're on the, we have two phones trying to get on and the two phones do not have the same information. So one is Zoom and one is the call. On the Zoom, we can't pull up the agenda and the one that's on the call, instead of the Zoom, or it's just a Zoom call, um, is not linked at the same time. So we're trying to figure out how to do that. And if we're having as much trouble trying to orchestrate this whole thing so that we can attend these meetings, I'm sure there's other people that are having even worse problems. So I don't know if there's any way that you can have the Zoom and the phone work at the same time so it's the same information, but it makes it really hard to try to figure out how to be a part of this meeting. Um, that's one thing. And then since I can't pull up the agenda, I don't really know what's coming up, but I need to talk to, um, some, some public comment issues. Maybe you could just tell me when public comment is going to be since I can't pull up the agenda.
So, uh, public comment on items not on the agenda will come after we discuss items removed from the agenda, but that will come after the COVID presentation. So we'll have the COVID presentation, then we'll have items pulled from the consent agenda. We have one item there, C twelve, and then we will have public comments on items not on the agenda.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. And please send an email and we will see if we can find you some answers on how to navigate the, the issue of having two phones.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Dottie. I believe those are all the public comments at this time. So Ryan will go to you for a roll call on items, oh, Supervisor Bone and Supervisor Wilson. I mean Supervisor Madron and Supervisor Wilson. Good morning, Supervisor Madron.
I thought you said Supervisor Bone first, but it's fine. So on C twenty four, um, I was reviewing it as well and I realize this is just a petition to start a process. It's not actually the approvals of everything, but looking at those two parcels, um, the one just south of the golf course is used quite regularly to, as a parking lot, as you know Supervisor Fennel, for the special events that happen there at the park, like the, uh, Summer Arts Festival and numerous other events that happen. And, and that lot is always used for that overflow parking. So I guess I'm a little concerned about, uh, the effect that that might have on future events in the area, uh, if we eliminate that parking. Because it's already, even with that parking, it's quite a nightmare down there as far as parking during those events. People parked all the way down the roads heading down towards, uh, the south and such. So that's a concern. And the other parcel off to the southeast has some really long linear features to it that don't really work well for commercial. But, you know, I, I again realize this is just a preliminary step, but, uh, I did want to at least make a few comments about some observations I've made there.
Thank you, Supervisor Madron. Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, um, I had similar concerns related to the Bimbo thing, but I, I do know that it's the beginning of a process and, and so there'll be time for people to comment within that. But I have, I'm wondering if John could read the correction to C twenty six into the record so that then, uh, we don't have any issues with that. And it's just one sentence, I think, so we might as well just, um, have that be done and go on to think about it or worry about it.
Thank you, Supervisor Wilson. Director Ford?
Thank you, Chair Fennel. So this is really a matter of changing some dates. Currently, it reads the sign shall be removed not later than September twenty ninth, twenty thirty five. The date there should be changed to twenty twenty five. So it will read the sign shall be removed not later than September twenty ninth, twenty twenty five. And further down, it says that the, uh, application for sign removal shall be submitted not later than September twenty ninth, twenty thirty four. That should be changed to read September twenty ninth, twenty twenty four. And then it says a demolition permit shall be submitted not later than May twenty ninth, twenty thirty five. That should read May twenty ninth, twenty twenty five for removal of all components of the sign, including foundations. It's, it's really just changing the, uh, the threes to twos. So it's from twenty thirty five to twenty twenty five, from twenty thirty four to twenty twenty four, and from twenty thirty five to twenty twenty five.
Thank you, Director Ford. And this obviously is because the, the staff recommendation was for fifteen years, but the board voted for five. So, um, I, I just want to say a very quick thing and maybe I'll ask the director to address this too. Um, I got the letter from Mr. Mulder and spoke with Director Ford. The point being made was that it was, uh, not appropriate to do a rezone without a specific project in place and that's just not the case. Uh, of course, there can be a rezone of that property if it's deemed, um, you know, there's certain requirements and one of those is that it fits the, the area. As we all know, there's a cannabis business up there right now and, um, so that's basically what the property owner is doing. And I, I would actually like Director Ford to address that as well, please. And then, as you said, it is the beginning of the process.
Thank you, Chair Fennel. It, it is, as you mentioned, the beginning of the process. This is a petition to begin the process. And so the board is authorizing the staff to accept an application to rezone the property from C one neighborhood commercial to C two community commercial. So it is not uncommon. In fact, it's more common than uncommon to consider zoning of property without a specific application being in place. So the real question here is what is the more appropriate zoning? Is it C one or C two? Both are consistent with the land use designation that is in place. We will be evaluating that. We will be conducting environmental review because there are some different uses that are allowed under the C two. And it may be that some other things need to be addressed as part of this analysis. And, uh, we'll let that process play itself out before a recommendation is brought to the planning commission and before the planning commission's recommendation is brought forward to the board. This in no way prejudices the board's ability to take final action on this, either to approve, deny, or approve and some modify.
Thank you very much, Director Ford. Appreciate that clarification. With that, uh, any further discussion on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll go to, uh, Ryan. Ryan, if you would, do the roll call vote.
Thank you, Chair Fennel. Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Modifications, yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
And Supervisor Fennel?
Yes.
Thank you. Passes five oh.
Thank you. Um, and as I mentioned just earlier, we'll now go to, um, our update on the COVID pandemic. Uh, we have, uh, Dr. Frankovich and Sheriff Hansel here with us, as well as Director Stevens of Public Health. Welcome, uh, all three of you. Uh, welcome, Dr. Frankovich, Sheriff and Michelle.
Morning.
Good morning.
Um, so I can lead off, um, just, uh, you know, a little background update too. Um, as people may be aware, we're seeing kind of a waxing and waning of COVID across different parts of the country right now. Um, you know, about half the states seeing increases, half, um, having some stable or decreases, um, which is good to see. Um, California has generally been doing well. Um, there are increasing counties moving down into the, um, orange tier, uh, which is good. Um, although I was on a call last night and there, of note, um, you know, there is, there, we are starting to see some increase in emergency room visits and such related to COVID. So it's always a moving target, um, with COVID. In Humboldt here, we, um, as of yesterday, had five hundred and eight cases total, um, twenty-three active. And regrettably, we've had, um, eight deaths in individuals who had been diagnosed with COVID. Um, but I would say, um, overall in Humboldt, we actually are doing really well. Um, I give huge credit to the residents who have really, I think, made an enormous effort to embrace the protective measures that we've been talking about. And, um, in addition to the efforts of, um, you know, multiple sectors, our partners, the JIC, who's, uh, really worked at, uh, you know, supporting, you know, businesses in their planning for a safe environment and our investigations teams that are going, um, just gangbusters trying to, um, make sure that we contain and spread as much as possible our laboratory individuals and the E O C teams, you know, working on things like our congregate living settings, which are incredibly important. So, um, I think we've really accomplished a lot here and we've landed in a pretty good place. That being said, I do want to point out that last week or when the state reported data for the week, um, that was for the week ending September twelfth, our data would have put us at the metric for the red tier, the more restrictive tier. Um, again, the rules of the game right now are that if you're in that tier for two weeks, um, then you need to, you would need to move to the more restrictive tier. Fortunately, we were able to look at the following week, um, and we've looked at now two after that. Um, and, uh, the state, uh, data looks good for us, um, for the weekend ending the nineteenth and actually still looks good for us this week, uh, with our numbers having us, um, clearly in the orange tier. So that's good. We're shooting for yellow. Um, and, uh, I did want to mention that the state is looking at some social equity measures to use as well as a positivity in our case rate. And they are looking at some possible like little, um, I don't know, sort of wild cards or incentives in that that might allow a county like ours that's doing as well as we are to move into a less restrictive tier. Um, and so I'll keep everybody posted on that. Um, that would have impacts on things primarily like our capacity and, um, increasing capacity in some of our settings like gyms and, um, increasing, um, the, or opening up the ability even for ours to have indoor operations, um, some family recreational opportunities indoors again, that type of thing. So we'll be watching that over the next two, two to three weeks to see where we land with that. Um, we are vulnerable, just like everyone else, to an outbreak that occurs, um, with a sudden increase in numbers of cases, but, um, I remain hopeful, um, that we would be able to make that move, which would be great. So our current positivity is that when we calculate it internally, um, is one point four percent, um, and our case rate is one point eight three. We need to be under one for case rate to move out of the orange. Again, unless some of these other wild cards come into play. So we'll see how that goes. Um, of note, some of the counties around us are, um, I think, you know, having, um, some increasing case rates and so we're following those as well. Um, in terms of updates, I want to just mention again, we're continuing to work on our regional testing partnership and, um, hoping to have that operational later in October. Um, this is the entity that, you know, the state is creating a super lab with Perkin Elmer equipment. In Southern California, we're doing a smaller version of that here in Humboldt, working with U I H S and Del Norte County, um, and anticipating being able to add four to five hundred specimens a day, um, with good turnaround times, um, and not having to ship them out of the area, which will be wonderful. So we're in lots of meetings, uh, with those partners about trying to get this in place. H S U, um, was able to provide a biosafety cabinet, which was great, um, and this helped us out. So, um, the good news too is that Optum is now slated to continue through November. So it does give us some overlap in testing capacity, which is great. So one of the things we're working on with testing is not only getting the whole lab set up, U I H S developing the web-based platform that we'll need, but also, um, developing our own testing collection strategy for Humboldt County, um, and what that will look like and building those teams. So I think that'll be really important for us going into flu season. Um, just a comment on vaccine. Um, again, we are going to be really emphasizing, um, the importance of flu vaccine this year in part because, you know, every year flu puts a strain on healthcare capacity and obviously with COVID in the mix, we have concerns about that. Um, and also because flu can, is obviously the symptom overlap is really significant between flu and COVID. And so it confuses the picture and makes things a little more difficult. So trying to keep people healthy from a flu standpoint will make things a little bit more straightforward. So we're really encouraging flu vaccination. We also, um, are now part of a planning process with the state on COVID vaccine distribution. Um, and, um, you know, with the, the earliest anticipated date right now would be sometime in November for limited doses, but we really don't know. Um, we don't anticipate there being broad access to vaccine until well into twenty twenty one, but we are beginning planning processes for all of that. Also, just wanted to give the board an update. We've been really working on our dashboard and data and what we can do to sort of broaden what we're doing around data. Um, I think in the next couple of weeks, we expect to be able to do, um, to put on our site, uh, case rate, case ranges. site the case rate, case ranges by zip code, which I think will be really helpful. Um, and we'll deal with smaller areas which have not experienced cases or have only one or two cases by using just in the lower age, the lowercase range will be like zero to five, um, or zero to four cases. Um, we are going to add hospitalization mortality data by age group, um as we now have some of additional data, um bigger numbers to be able to do that with. Uh, we also already broke our pediatric group into two groups to give a little better definition to that and a more prominent link to the hospital data. Daily hospital data is on our dashboard as well. And then uh one additional thing we're doing is a better breakdown of race and ethnicity data. The state is actually mandating that that data be reported now by providers requiring or requesting testing because we really, we're not getting full data on that. Um, there's a lot of requisitions that don't have it on there, and so we really do need to have that information to get a really clear picture of what we know is a disproportionate burden of disease in communities of color. And so um on our site, actually, we have been presenting the ethnicity data and race as a percent of, including a big category of unknown. Uh, what we're going to start doing is taking out that category of unknown and reporting those numbers by the total that we do have reported, so we can see what that looks like. Um, and the last thing I was going to mention is that we do have a, uh, there's a new state guidance that was just released late yesterday on playgrounds, uh, community playgrounds being able to be open. And there's a, so there is guidance available online for that and we'll, we'll um be putting that out there as well. And um then again, they keep telling us the guidance on gatherings is forthcoming as well as holidays, but we're already starting to do some talking around what are some safer options, um for Halloween especially since it's the first one coming up, and then other holidays as well. So I think that's most everything I was going to update on. I'm sure if there are questions.
Thank you, Director uh Hildoff Fisher Frankovich. Um, so are there any questions from the Board for Dr. Frankovich to begin with? Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, I'm not sure if it's a real question. I know that health equity, um, or the social equity metric, whatever the metric is right now, we had, our CSAC board had several calls over the weekend with uh like Dr. Galley, and it still seems really murky. So um, I suspect, I know, I think he's doing an announcement on Wednesday. I mean, I understand the same that you did, that it could have some perks that could be really helpful. It sounds like they don't want it to be punitive, but um I'm just wondering when, once you get the information, hopefully uh you can give us the download of it before, so we don't have to wait for two weeks, because I'm really curious to see what it, what it really does. And so far, I, it's been very um uh not clear. So um I would just hope that when the information is there, you can uh brief us one way or the other as soon as possible, because, you know, it, it sounds like it could be something to look forward to, but kind of like, you know.
Until, until you see the final version, it's always hard to know. Um, but I agree with you, right now it actually sounds promising for us.
I'll be, I'll be interested to hear.
Yeah, that's great. Uh, any further comments or questions for Dr. Frankovich? Um, yes, Supervisor Bone?
And I, I don't know what the, the, I get, but I've got quite a few phone calls. Can you explain to us again, I know you did this two weeks ago, if somebody is a resident here and they go outside the area and get COVID and are hospitalized outside the area, the, and I, and I, and I don't know what, what it matters, but it, it does, and comes back here because it's a resident of Humboldt, is that the way it does with COVID testing? If we have somebody outside the area gets tested for COVID, but since they're from here, does those, are those numbers skewed that way?
Well, if, yeah, again, it is reported by county of residence that's mandated in the state system. We don't have any choice about that. So the, um, but by the same token, it works the other way as well. So if someone's traveling here, becomes ill, is sick in our hospital, it gets attributed, um their, their COVID diagnosis gets attributed to their county of residence as well.
Okay.
But again, as soon as the correct address is put into the state system, it shifts it to that system and we don't even access it anymore. So it, we were not able to.
And then the only other thing is, is um our higher learning institutes, uh College of the Redwoods and Humboldt State with all the programs and all the stuff they've instituted, there seemed to be a lot of drama a while ago about all of this and everything else. How are they faring? Are we doing pretty good? It seems like they're, they're doing a pretty good job working with you guys. Is that, is that all been uh, is that a great partnership or uh government-to-government working?
Yeah, we've been doing really well. I mean, as you can see across the country, it's been a huge issue and we've done really well here comparatively. And I think um I credit Humboldt with a lot of planning on that, which was great in terms of structuring classrooms and, and structuring ability for us to isolate and quarantine individuals. So I think that's really helpful. And we've been working with them on sort of ongoing testing and testing strategies. What we'd like to be able to do is some ongoing surveillance testing. And um I was just discussing that with their uh medical director, uh Dr. Saleen, this past week. So we're trying to figure out how to do that. I think that'll be easier once we have our new um testing thing up and running. Um, capacity's a little tougher to do that now, but we're looking at strategies for what that would look like. You're obviously not going to test the entire campus, so you're going to be looking at doing some strategic testing in different groups in the campus, um just to kind of keep an eye on what might be circulating, because we do know it's a high-risk setting.
Well, good. Thank you for, for mending that gap and making it work between all of you.
Thank you, Doctor. Supervisor Wilson?
You know, just on that, I mean, in what I've been reading about campuses across the United States, there's just a lot of variability. I mean, some campuses are just, just, it was a complete disaster, and then there's really campuses like Humboldt uh and CR that have been doing, doing pretty well. And it speaks a lot to the administrations of those various organizations. Um, it speaks a lot to the communities and even just the student cultures of those various institutions uh are really reflected quite a bit. And there's some, uh, like I said, there's some great articles about that out there. Um, and then just in the future, as parents, you know, thinking about where to send uh or where to, you know, support our young adults as they move into their, you know, higher education, I think this is really something that should be long-term, you know, reflective on those institutions as they move forward. I, I'm just, I'm thankful that so far, we have an, one of those uh institutions that has been responding um in a, in a, in a good, in a good manner or has been successful so far. Um, and I'm, I'm hoping that um with the support of our organizations and our community that that continues. But um anyways, I just wanted to point out that, uh, you know, the concern is real and it, and especially based on what we're seeing on other campuses around the United States. But again, there's a spectrum of response and, and culture around that. I think we're doing, we're doing, we're doing really well, and I appreciate the support of our, of our public health staff and the collaboration. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Wilson. Um, I, I guess one thing I would add to that is that it, it would be really great to get some specifics on why it is, it's working so well here um compared to others. Is that, ju, as, as Supervisor Wilson said, that students are paying attention to what the guidelines are? I mean, that, I, it would be really helpful to know, because I know that there are, uh, just with regard to high school and elementary schools, there are some school districts that are still doing distance learning and others who are uh open. And um it would be good for people to understand what makes a successful reopening, I guess.
Yeah, and I think we'll learn lessons over time. You know, I think testing right out of the gate was important, um so that we weren't pulling kids into congregate settings, um where there was easy spread because those cases multiplied quickly. Um, I think that the university did a lot of messaging about um expectations on behavior. And again, I know that um their work group on, you know, sort of structuring the environment um had put in a lot of time on trying to do things on campus that were good. I also think we're benefiting by size. You know, it's a smaller institution. It's really different when you pull together 40,000 students, fraternities, huge amount of kids in dorms. I mean, it's a much more challenging environment as well. And so I think those are some of the things we're seeing play out. So again, I'd be, you know, I'd be surprised if we don't see some clusters of cases on campus. Um, it's, you know, it's just, it's just like we see clusters of cases elsewhere in our community. That would not surprise me tremendously, and especially because they're young, healthy individuals. It's challenging because many of them will be pretty well until, and it's hard to detect that they're spread until there's a lot. Um, but you know, all that being said, you know, we're learning as we go.
Thank you, Doctor. Anything um else to discuss before we go to public comment? Yes, Supervisor Madron?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I just wanted to thank uh Dr. Frankovich and Director Stevens, and again, all the frontline workers um in healthcare, as well as uh at the JIC and the EOC and the Sheriff's Department. Uh, this has just been a really long haul, and thank you all for your incredible service uh in that regard. Uh, we are doing really well on many, many things. Uh, one of the things that's not working well at all is the CRV buyback program that's been completely collapsed under COVID. And, you know, I'm sure we're all getting calls. People are, you know, it's like, how many bags can you store in your yard, you know, and animal problems and all these things? And as I mentioned, uh, previous meeting in Oregon, they actually have machines in front of the stores that uh you can deposit your materials into directly there. So uh I also mentioned, it's high time we, we create a campaign, bring back the nickel, you know? Either don't charge the nickel or accept the stuff back. And um I'm just wondering, Supervisor Bass, if you've heard much at CSAC or if anybody's heard anything at the governor's level on solutions to this? I know, you know, Recology tried to open up for, uh, Humboldt Waste Management opened up for like a day and then they got overwhelmed. We could create a tiered system where, you know, you only can show up if your last name starts with an A on this day, A through E, and then, you know, people are suggesting lots of ways to try and prevent that, um, you know, onslaught of people, because we've got, everybody's built up so much. So that is not working well at all, and I have heard no solutions yet. And I'm wondering what's going on at CSAC, what's going on at the governor's office there? So, thank you.
Through the chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Madron. Yeah, absolutely. Go ahead.
Actually, I haven't heard anything recently. Um, when this started, about, I don't know, three months into it, um, I know that there are definitely challenges at the s, the state level. Um, and normally, you know, CSAC has obviously been very embroiled in just dealing with all of the COVID dollars and the juvenile justice and other things that have been going on um in the last many months. I will reach out again though, because this, this is continuing and I know we are not the only community. I'm curious about the um, you know, the uh, the machines that you've talked about, you know, because I think we're going to have to start doing something prior to waiting for the state to actually make whatever changes, you know, they need to do. It's like, I can tell you, every time I open up my attic, I have things fall on my head. And um it does get really old for a while, and you know, pretty soon you start getting bugs and it's not a good thing at all. So um I'll see what I can find out for you this week on that. Sorry, I don't have more information right now.
Supervisor Bone, do you care to, I mean, I've been talking with several people about this too, and I know that the HWMA, you know, it's a tough thing.
It's all on CalRecycle. You got to understand, a nickel a can, I think it's 36 cans make a pound. So it's a buck eighty if you pay a nickel out for each can. And then when they sell those 36 cans after they handle it and everything else, I think aluminum's down to around 44 cents a pound. You guys do the math, we're losing a buck thirty a pound. Um, so with that being said, I mean, maybe all of us could all donate, it's going to take quite a bit of money and offset that, because there still has to be an offset. Now with that offset, we've always, we, we, I think we have $10 a ton into our, our garbage for recycling. That does not cover it anywhere near, and, and especially the idea of having to recycle, accept recycling in COVID days. I've been, we've been talking, this has been such an issue. Now, this hasn't stopped the um Cal, it, it's all on CalRecycle. Um, it costs us so much to do this. And so I had set up a meeting with um CalRecycle, um Senator McGuire met with the um Acting Director of CalRecycle and discussed this. They're working with our local HWMA on this. There's a lot of stuff going on. I would love to say, yeah, we'll probably open up anytime. That's what I would like to do, but it's that every 36 cans, we're going to lose a buck and a quarter. So we're going to have to find out. The best way to do this right now is, is everybody, I mean, it comes down to, does everybody want to pay a little bit more for their garbage to offset the loss? The other aspect is, is falling on your head and um, you know, getting bugs, you can still take the, the, the um recycling, get it out of the waste stream and sit in, um HWMA will still handle it and get it sent off in the proper way. That cuts down some of the costs. There's still the handling cost and everything else. We're not trying to steal their money. We are trying to get subsidized back from CalRecycle. CalRecycle won't even, we basically asked to do pop-ups, so we don't put it all in one place. Um, that's kind of why some of the private industries aren't doing this. So with that being said, um HWMA, Jill is working extremely hard on getting some answers, and we don't have any answers. And I think that's the most frustrating thing we do in this job, is when people say, I want my nickel. You know, we can, we can do a nickel the back campaign, we can, you know, this, yesterday morning, there was two bags of recyclables dumped on the front steps of the courthouse. I don't think they were just left there for any other reason. And the other factor being is, if you look around your own neighborhoods right now, I'm picking up a lot more cans. People are back to the can out, which was, okay, you threw it out, there was always somebody with the writer to pick it up because they can make a little bit of money off of it. Not the case. So we're uh, we're trying to work on something. Uh, is it going to happen real soon? I, I don't feel it's going to happen real soon unless CalRecycle wants to uh separate part of that, I think it's $1.7 billion a year they get off of cans. So I mean, it's, it's, it's not good points, but it's just, it's, and right now, it's a uh, it's a loss item. It's never been a, a big moneymaker. In the days, it used to make a little bit more, but you know, with, with what's going on in third world, you know, around the, the Pacific Rim and not buying the stuff, that's, the market has died off. So that's kind of what I know. I just sent an email to Jill Friday, well, Sunday night, when I took, that was here Sunday night, when I first noticed the cans out front, so I took a picture of it, sent it to him, and asked her, I said, what are we going to do? Because that's going to be, more people are talking about going to Sacramento or front steps here and just dumping them out. That's, it's a good way to make a statement, but all that's going to do is cost the county more money to clean it up. So we need to get on CalRecycle. I want to thank uh Senator McGuire and um I've talked, and Assemblyman Woods has met with um Director Duffy also on this situation. They've both been active in it. We've, and I've been um asking for their help to get anything we can out of CalRecycle. That's kind of it. It's just, there's no money in it right anymore. So, you know, everybody wanted, remember when we had all the recycling centers everywhere? There's no money in it anymore, so.
Yeah, I, I know. And it's really difficult, especially uh with HWMA and having to deal with it. It, it is, as you said, it goes further up the food chain, and it's a little bit unconscionable that it took the COVID situation to kick into gear at this opportunity for people to drop out of, of providing that service. And I know that it's the bottom line, but the money is there, and so we need to just keep on pressuring. So thank you for all your work on that. Okay, well, uh, that, that's just one of the things to do. Yes, okay, Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, I wanted to uh thank Supervisor Bone for his efforts there, as well as our legislative representatives. Uh, that's uh, that's really great. I appreciate that time and effort. Um, you know, it's, it's quite interesting. The stores are literally paying uh CalRecycle to not do it, you know, right? So anytime you've got a system where people are paying to not do something, something's very wrong with the system. And you're absolutely right, Chair. Uh, it took COVID to finally uh expose these underlying problems with the overall system. Uh, and you know, part of the problem also is our franchise agreements run 20 years, and I understand the need for that, to be able to provide some security uh to the franchise operators and all that. But, you know, we're 10 years into those, so we're in the middle of those agreements, which makes it really hard to try and do something. But there are communities that are renegotiating those franchise agreements and trying to make those providers whole in terms of providing those services still, uh, because I do recognize it's a losing venture for them right now. But anyway, I just wanted to thank Supervisor Bone and, and uh, yeah, encourage us all to continue to keep the pressure on uh the legislature, but in particular CalRecycle, like, like uh Supervisor Bone said, because that is where the change needs to happen. So thank you for your time.
Counsel Billingsley, I have a feeling you're going to talk about mission drift, but you do have your hand up, so let's.
I, 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 sorry, Chair. I do think the conversation was starting to drift a little bit. I just wanted to bring to the Board's attention.
Okay, thank you. With that, if we have no further discussion at this point, I'll open this up for public comment on our presentation here on the COVID emergency. We have a number of hands up. We'll start with four numbers of 7033, the last four of your phone. And I think I know who this is. Oh no, yes, it is. Welcome.
Hi, this is Dr. Connor again. I'm sorry, I interrupted the earlier time. I just wanted to make a couple of comments regarding COVID. First of all, again, I want to reiterate my compliments to Dr. Frankovich and Dr. Ennis because the fact that we're not seeing what we, what could be a disaster in Humboldt County is likely due to their leadership. That's just one. As far as the colleges are concerned, the unfortunate way of thinking of a lot of colleges, specifically the kids or that, you know, let me just get COVID and get over with it. Well, if you know teenagers or kids from 20 on, I mean, that is just not okay because the long-term health effects of COVID are here. We know that they're there and that's a problem. So it's not a benign disease. But the last thing I wanted to make mention is in, is what Supervisor Bone and a couple of other comments have made throughout this last few months. And that is the long-term health effects and mental effects of children who are not going to school together. And I, I went to the literature and I looked up, you know, major disasters. I mean, obviously between hurricanes and earthquakes and refugee crisis, kids are put into horrible positions. And what we understand psychologically is that as long as families show their, you know, give reassurance to the kids, talk openly and honestly with children, kids will be resilient, okay? It's the only thing that I worry about are kids who are in a household with a poor economic or poor economics due to this COVID. You know, there definitely is more child abuse. So the goal is wear a mask, get our economy back in order and then, you know, those kind of things can be protected. But I wouldn't worry about kids who are in good homes and healthy homes in terms of long-term effect of, of being quarantined or, or working at home. So I just wanted to make that comment and that's, I think that's all I wanted to, to say and I, I thank you for everything.
Thank you, Doctor. We have two more hands up and this is 7454. Welcome.
You knew who that one was too, didn't you, Estelle?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, good guess. You know, I, I still have some major questions. You know, we've had eight deaths here. I haven't seen the stats on how many on the average we would be losing to flu during this same time period, especially in the specific demographics where we seem to be losing these people. That'd be an interesting one for all of us to be made aware of. I think that would be transparency. Says hospitalizations 31. I brought it to, to the sheriff's attention the other day, that if you go, I think the LA Times, someone said you can go down there and find out how many people are currently hospitalized and it's updated every single day. Why can't we have that particular figure brought forward to us? Why do we have to go to the Los Angeles Times? I was pleased to see, if I understood exactly, United Airlines is going to be, be the first airline to start testing. They, they probably won't test here because we're a little tiny podunk airport, but I think it's a 15-minute test, I believe. And so they're, they're actually marketing that, I believe, is when you arrive where you're going, possibly if you tested okay with us on your way down there, you won't have to two-week quarantine. So don't know about that one. I'm just asking, it's questions we should ask. I've always had angst. I don't think we've had a single temperature that I'm aware, taken out at the airport, let alone any tests. We continually have related things that happen where we have traveler-related things and we don't really know. So it's kind of sad that that never has been even checked into. And so anyway, I, I also have a question regarding the county. How many county employees have died from COVID? How many are hospitalized? How many, how many, how many of those people are affected? And it's time for us to open the county back up again. Was very pleased to see the after-school program working out there in Blue Lake. The kids were outside and I was told they had distancing, they were doing an art project out there, probably looked like 20 kids out there. Why can't we take the business model or the, or the model that works for the big universities and really push applying that to our children? My wife's right now over across my house next door with my granddaughter and six, six hours a day. And that's what, that's what it takes for a family, for each of the two kids. So anyway, it's time to make some changes here. I think it could be done. The models are there, so please move forward with those. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you. And next caller is numbers 0150. If you can press star six, there you go.
Hi, it's Dottie again from Sohum. So I wanted to talk about the recycling issue a little bit and also what's going on with, with other aspects of this. As far as the recycling is concerned, the, the recycling gets mixed up. People that are willing and wanting to recycle, they have like this commitment to doing the right thing. In addition to that, they have, some of them have financial needs. And, and so they're collecting it. But then there's other people that then are just collecting all kinds of stuff on top of the recycling, thus creating a health safe and safety issue. And the planning department is now doing abatement letters and talking and, and telling the, the people that have this, whether it's a landlord or a tenant or a property owner, that they're gonna do abatements that's gonna, you know, end up costing many thousands of dollars with a contractor. So I, I think that we have to, you know, maybe we could find a huge warehouse that could be divided into sections so that people could put their recycling. If this is their only means of, of income, it does seem like it's pretty harsh to, whether they're a landlord, I mean, whether it's a tenant or a property owner, to be telling them that they're gonna be not only not able to recycle it because the recycle center is closed and the dumpster closed, but on top of that, that they're gonna be fined somewhere between $5,000 and $20,000. So I have a tenant that wasn't a tenant of mine in the first place, that moved into a piece of property without the right to be there. They just moved in, but because of COVID, we allowed it to happen for multiple reasons. And so if we look at the COVID thing, if there's a homeless person that is on the streets and interacting with people on the streets on a daily basis, and if they're not on the streets, they're arrested for going into somebody's trash to get their trash and then they're put in jail, how much would that cost the county to oversee all that? And then they're gonna do this abatement thing and charge people for that same person. So it's like this person is costing so much money in so many different aspects. There has to be a way that we can get involved with the person, with the agencies, with rent rehousing, with the Home Key Program, so that this situation doesn't become a situation for every department in the county. So I don't know if one person on the board could, you know, be assigned to work on this issue. I mean, it's very complicated because it's, there's so many different aspects of it. But I spoke to the planning department today and I said, okay.
Thank you, Dottie. Extreme Minister, I'm so sorry. Thank you, bye. Okay, so our next caller is number 3053.
Good morning again, Thomas Mulder here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, so I wanted to share some sentiments, I believe I heard Kent say I've asked as well. I saw on News Channel 3 this morning, they did all the COVID numbers for Humboldt County, but then they said 23 active cases. So I think it'd be really, really nice on our dashboard to show our total cases, our active cases, our active hospitalizations, and then the deaths and all of that stuff and how many people have recovered. So that way we're looking at real numbers. If you see 500 and something, it's like, oh wow. And then I saw this morning, I was like, there's only, there's 23 active. So that means that the community's spread numbers must be down. I mean, I saw publicity that, you know, the Sohum super-spreader created 30 some odd cases. It'd be nice, you know, that if there was any other region of the county that we equally call out that area of the county, if there is a super-spreader out there. Me personally, a resident of Southern Humboldt, I thought that was, the verbiage wording may be possibly inappropriate, may be possibly appropriate, but it'd just be nice to use the same language. But I think that dashboard is something the community deserves. They've asked for, and I don't see why we can't provide that because it'd be nice to know how many people are hospitalized. People might think twice if all of a sudden, you know, every active case is hospitalization. People might think twice about going out to the grocery store for a couple of days or, you know, different things like that, so the community can be more aware. As far as the other doctor that called in, I think the biggest fear for everyone, myself, I, I have out there is the, the social emotional impact of families. So many families are not in healthy places. So many children are not in healthy places. They need to have that social interaction. I think there's a lot of, I've seen some stuff out there that supposedly the suicide rates are higher than the COVID death rates. I don't know how true or untrue that is, but it, I, we haven't really touched on that. I think we really, really need to touch on that. And piggyback on the previous caller, it would be, it would be nice to, with these COVID times, to have places cleaned up, especially that parcel that's right next to the Garberville Hospital that burned down at one point in time. So thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Thomas. Do you have any further public comment on this item? Seeing none? No more?
Correct, Chair, Fennel, there's no, that concludes public comment.
Thank you very much.
Person Fennel.
So, okay, back to the board.
I'm sorry, Person Fennel, I just wanted to respond if I could for a moment, because I think there's some confusion on this point. If, if the, if the people commenting could please go to the dashboard and on the dashboard, right at the top in big blue letters, it says State of California Data and Tools. If you click on that, you can go right to hospitalizations by county. You can see the current inpatient status for every county in the state and ICU. So the data is right there. And in terms of our active cases, again, we report recovered cases and we, you know, those are, that's everyone who has come out of isolation and is considered recovered. The active is just that from the total and the definitions are in big orange letters right under there, the link to those. So I think there is information on there, people take some time and scroll through and take a look. And so, anyway.
And then, what, could you clarify also the, the issue of super-spreader? Get to you right now Supervisor Bone. In terms of super-spreader, it's not that a person is the super-spreader, it's that an event is a super-spreading event. Is that correct? That in, within that event, within that gathering, it's?
Sure. I think you can use it really in both ways. We do think there are some individuals who just may have a very high viral load and spread it very efficiently, but I, also you're right, the, the event itself by its nature can allow that to happen more easily. And so it's just, it's really kind of both can create the perfect storm.
Okay, good. Supervisor Bone, sorry for that.
Yeah, and I just, Dr. Frankovich, thanks for pointing out all the places we can go to get all that information. And since we provide a lot of that information and, and things like that, and since we have it, I think what the public's asking, and they keep asking us, why can't we just make it one-stop shopping and put that on our dashboard since it's already out there? You have people in place to do that, is I don't think it would be that much to do because I know smaller counties, much smaller than ours, are doing that. I think that's all people are asking. And I know it's in big orange letters and I know we can just go to the top of the dashboard and then go to the state and then go to your county, then go, it's not that easy. When, when we have, when we have a dashboard that we're trying to give, the biggest thing, anytime anybody's scared, I think, and worried, I think what they wanna do is they wanna know all the, the avenues of what is happening so they know how to handle it and, and what the, the, what is going on. And I think it would be so much easier if we just provided the hospitalizations without, you know, I know if somebody gets, my neighbor gets hauled off in an ambulance, you don't wanna think it's COVID, but I'm gonna know what my neighbor's getting hauled off in an ambulance, where I'm not worried about that. But if we could just, with, with the people we have, if we could just put that on the dashboard, instead of every two weeks, people asking for it, we're gonna say it's in big orange numbers and just push the button at the top of the screen, why don't we just put it on there and then we won't have to have this discussion anymore? Seems simple, but I'm not, you know, I'm not in your position. But I know other health directors are doing it in the 58 counties. That's, that's, I'm just, that's what the people are asking for, a lot of them. I don't know why they need it, but they feel like it because they keep asking for it. So if we could do that, that would be, that would be really good for those people. Thank you.
Yes, Supervisor Bone, I understand. We are, one of the issues we have, and by the way, some of the counties that are doing that currently are looking at linking to the state site because, for two reasons really. One is that it sounds like it should be really simple, but it, number one, the state site doesn't always concur because of time lags and data reporting. So it wouldn't be uncommon for us to report two hospitalizations and the state site to have three hospitalizations because of that. And I cannot tell you the number of calls we get if there's a discrepancy between the two numbers. And so it does take time on that end and it also takes time on our staffing end to try and follow people throughout their course. And so it's just, you know, it's really just a logistical issue. If we can provide, you know, good, up-to-date, reasonable data with a link, it just seems like it's a time saver for everyone. I understand the concern about people having to click a couple of times to get to the data. And so I'll bring it back to the data team, but that really is the primary concern is just the time involved. And again, I've had a couple of health officers ask me, how's that working out? Because it's been a big time suck for their staff as well.
Any? A lot of, any more questions or comments or discussion at the board level? Director Stevens, Sheriff Hansel, anything to add to the discussion?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, all of your time and very happy to hear that we'll be doing more of the breakdowns by zip code. That's something I've been hoping to see, so that's gonna come up soon and that will give us a lot more of the kind of data people are, are really looking for. Again, thank you very much, Dr. Frankovich, Director Stevens, Sheriff Hansel. And that will now take us back to the consent agenda and to item C12 that was pulled for discussion. So remind me, was it? Was it Supervisor Bone who pulled this item? I can't remember. Supervisor Madron?
I believe.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I do realize this is just a, a standard update aligning our policy with changes that have happened at the state. So I have no issues with that whatsoever. I recognize that's just a, a bookkeeping process that we're doing to stay up to speed. The, the reason I pulled it was just simply, I wanted to just very briefly point out that this particular policy here really covers employees and it doesn't cover the board. The board is covered in terms of ethics and conflicts of interest through additional measures governed by the FPPC, et cetera. And in this case, and in our case, it's, you know, these are the legal financial conflicts of interest that folks need to pay very, very close attention to. But as we all know in our ethics training, there's also the appearance of a conflict of interest and, and that's not really covered in this for employees, nor is it covered that well in our stuff. But what I wanted to do is commend the board. I've noticed numerous times over the year and a half or so I've been on the board, where board members and planning commissioners have recused themselves from a discussion of an item when they have an appearance of a conflict. And I wanted to commend the board and planning commissioners for, for really adhering to that. It's not required by law, but it certainly does help protect the public trust. And so I just wanted to take a chance here to, to commend everybody on the board and the planning commission when you do that. So that's really all I had on that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Madron. County, Council, did you? Council, did you have anything to add? I saw you had your hand up.
I could just, I'll reiterate what Supervisor Madron said. This is our biennial update. Most of the changes are positions that have either changed, that are new or no longer exist, so that's in Appendix B. The language of the resolution is statutory. I believe the only major change there is the gift limit has moved up to $500, but otherwise it is all basically the same as it was two years ago.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion at the board? We put it out for public comment. We have one hand up here and it is a number ending in seven, four, five, four.
Estelle, Kent Stowatsky here. I'm, I'm, this, this concerns me greatly. I don't know what your ethics training amounts to. I attend many meetings or watch many meetings and the, the amount of times, and I have to, might have to agree to disagree with Supervisor Madron on this one, I really hardly recall anybody doing a proper process for this. And maybe, maybe it's not clear to me, but maybe the whole public needs to be educated. Even one of your staff members I was speaking with yesterday wasn't sure whether somebody's son, who is not a dependent, falls underneath this. And if I recall, there's a long list, not too long, but grandparents, children, all those things, I don't think there's clarity here. And I made comment here probably four or six weeks ago to John Ford, that I felt that your planning commissioner, Brian Mitchell, had a conflict. He worked for Humboldt Healthcare, which when you Google is Emerald Family Farms, and he, he, he is the chief financial officer, CFO. CFO, CEOs, those are the kind of people who have direct thing. If you're, if you're in the cannabis business, if you're a foreman out there in the field or trimming and you're, you're really not dependent upon that and probably could sit there. But my, my angst was that I, I did not get any clarification or response back from John Ford. And I was told by one of your staff members, he's the one I'm supposed to be going through. And the other thing I have, if someone has this kind of a job that appears, has the perception of having a major conflict because you're either deciding whether your competition or future business partners are getting permitted to play, whether that person's required to update their 700 form should they no longer be working. So, I also have concerns and the perception is that, you know, when I go into planning and building, and maybe this is just ethics or something, and I see a meeting going on in George Ford, in John Ford's office, the door is open and, and, and the normal players are in there, and then King's agreeing with me on this one, and then Rex Saunders in and goes to me and the door closes. Of course, my comment was, and kind of got heads shaking, is the Rex Long, Long Cartel getting another permit today? To me, that's improper. People's supervisors should not be directly participating. They should refer the staff to someone. Otherwise, the perceptions there that if a supervisor is a person who's hiring, firing, and determining wages and things for this person, should not be in the room under these circumstances. And I feel that's a conflict. So, I, I think that's a couple of great examples. I, I would like to be educated a little more, and of course, I would be delving in anymore, but it seems there's no, not clarity even amongst your staff that will be making those determinations as far as what a conflict is. So, it's something that needs to be worked on. I know this is just housekeeping as far as this thing's going as a, both your, your interim county council and, and as Supervisor Madron mentioned, but it is time to look at this. I just have some serious doubts in the public just too. There's a major perception problem out there that there are major conflicts of interest on the Board of Supervisors and some of your key positions. Thank you for my opportunity to speak today.
Thank you. I believe we have another public comment here. Phone number ends in five, two, nine, nine. Welcome. Just press star six in order to, there you go. Yes, welcome.
Hi, Board. This is Drew Redden from App State 1684 again. I would just take this opportunity to put in a reminder for county council and the board that policies affecting represented employees, even when they're statutory, should properly go through a notice and opportunity period to inform us that policy is going to be changing to at least be able to discuss impact if needed. And something like this, it's, you know, it's a statutory thing, not, not too big of an issue, but just a reminder that policies affecting our staff really should be noticed to, to our unions. Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. See, I don't believe there's any further public comment on this item. Bring it back to the board. Any further discussion?
No.
Let's, Supervisor Madron.
I would move approval of this item.
Yeah, I, I appreciate, I appreciate the setup. Yeah, I'll, I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. And Ryan, if you can do the roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Chair Fennel. Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
You betcha.
And Supervisor Fennel?
Yes.
Thank you. Pass this five vote.
Thank you. Appreciate the, okay, so now we go to public comment on not agenda items. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Again, go to the numbers on the screen and then press star nine. And once you are given the cue to speak, you can press star six. And we have public speaker with four, zero, one, five, zero as your last four. You could press star six. There you go. Welcome.
Hi, this is Dottie again from Sohum. I just want to get some clarification about what the cost is. And I know that we're over the COVID, so this was something that, that I wanted to find out about. What is the cost associated with somebody that is houseless on the county in terms of the interaction with COVID and what's happening with that? And do you have anybody on the board that is specifically assigned to this homeless situation and putting them in motels and what's happening and the cost of that? And, and how, how, what, what statistics do we have about how that's helping? And are we doing enough or do we need to do less? There's a program called Rapid Rehousing, and is that program being used in Southern Humboldt? Because I haven't heard of it. And I think I would like to have a direct person to talk to about how is that program being used in Southern Humboldt and what are the statistics on it? The HHHC, the Humboldt Homeless and Housing Coalition, meeting has been canceled as of yesterday. So, is there a person on the board that is on a committee of some kind that, that would have some of these facts or who would I talk to?
Thank you, Dottie. Any further public comment on items not on the agenda? We have, and by the way, I'll have, we, we don't interact directly during public comment on items not on the agenda, but I'll provide a little clarification. We have a public comment with three, zero, five, three.
Good morning. Thomas Mulder here again. I want to talk a little bit about abatement and that kind of topic. So, at what point in time, I would like to know some clarification at some point in time, and I know we can't engage in a back and forth. Abatements of properties that are health and safety violation, fire hazard, all those kind of things. I've noticed a few over driving around on different streets, just in coursing my actions that are kind of overrun with garbage and fire hazards in, in residential areas. So, it'd be nice, we do have those satellites and it'd be nice to see them using on, on that aspect as well. Also, I don't know exactly the policy, but I know a lot of people get abatement notices for cannabis related and grading type things, but I'd also like, you know, is there a policy as far as equity whenever, you know, someone does a big illegal grading, is, do they also get that public noticing? And some people call it public shame of getting an abatement notice in the, in the paper. And lastly, while we're in fire season, I thank everyone that's working hard to try to protect their community and, you know, make everything as safe as possible. But on that same note, how does someone, when there's an extreme fire hazard with illegal, I don't know what you'd call it, scraps, wood scraps, all that kind of stuff? And where does someone go forward with that? Because sometimes it doesn't seem that their concerns are really dealt with. So, is it just, is it call into the Board of Supervisors, call into Cal Fire, just because there's a huge concentration of fuel stockpiled in a residential area? Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Thomas. We have another caller, seven, four, five, four. I think I recognize that number.
Estelle, you know, I, I have, I want to share what Mr. Mulder said there. You know, I'm not just the last person to say cannabis should be treated much differently. And so, anybody who's done illegal grading or had a negative effect, those should be sought out and, and taken to the mat. Not, not that you'll deny their permit for that, but, but anyway, I, I strongly support that fuels reduction is king, you know, for those of us who attempt to do it. And yet, our neighbors are stockpiling combustibles and it's a little bit scary, you know, to be endangered by that, but I guess that's just what it is. We had the major fuels reduction in a place I have, just four miles in Trinity County, and it didn't work. Scotch broom came in. If any of you know what Scotch broom is, when you have a, basically a candle wick that's standing nine foot high, it's going to jump up, up into those, to the tree. So, that's something we need to be looking after is the fuels reduction, especially during this time when we start paying attention. I did wish to mention something regarding what I feel is a very sacred place. And that, that, there are a couple of them around. One is, one is the Matole Valley. I've always felt that is a very special place. It was for me when I was young. And, and then we, we have the other one up here called Maple Creek. And I, the cumulative impacts of what is proposed up there have not been assessed. And I think we really need to look at a few different things regarding that is cumulative impacts of, of miles of plastic. You know, here we're talking about not being able to recycle. Where are all these greenhouses coming? I don't know where the landfills are that are going to take these things in five years, one year, 30 years, depending on when they are abandoned or left, how the people are going to dispose. So, we really don't have an exit strategy for that, that I'm aware of. I have not, I have not seen Jill Duffy or, you know, the board, board there that Rex is on, you know, addressing that, but I don't get to see all the meetings, so maybe something is being done. But that's a major concern to me, all the plastics. Of course, we also have solar power, which my understanding is not recyclable. And so, some of these consequences, I wish we'd start paying attention to now rather than having the big problems we have later. And again, I totally concur. They're taking my nickel. They darn well ought to be able to do something with it. And I don't care if they have to drop into their, their, your general fund to do this. Had plenty of opportunities to set money aside for that and haven't done so. And so, that, that's a lot of angst out there amongst all of us. And I feel for you, Virginia, you know, it is a hazard. I saw on Craigslist there, come by and pick up my 20 bags of free recyclables or something like that. So, there's a problem out there. Please deal with that one. So, thank you for opportunity to speak on those topics. And, and please don't let Maple Creek go the way of, of, you know, Honeydew and these other areas. It'd just be too sad for me to see that. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Kent. Any further public comment on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. I did say that I had information, I think it was Dottie who was talking about help for the homeless and the costs, et cetera, and work that's being done in Southern Humboldt. I encourage you to call Director Beck, Connie Beck, the Director of Health and Human Services, and you get all that information there. And if you don't, can't find that number, let, get ahold of me. And as far as some abatements that are out there, some, some really unhealthy situations, I, I know of several myself, and I also know that code enforcement is following up on all of those. So, just want to get that out there. So, now we go to department reports. And the first item on our agenda today is from the Turk of the Board, and it's for the appointment of a 2020, 2021 member and alternate to the California State Association of Counties. Welcome, Kathy.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. The item before you today is for the board to consider appointing a member and alternate to the California State Association of Counties Board of Directors. Each year, your board appoints a member and an alternate to the CSAC Board of Directors to a one-year term, which commences with the first day of the annual conference, CSAC Annual Conference, which this year is, are going to be a virtual meeting held beginning November 12th and ending November 19th. So, the item before you today is for your board to consider appointment of a member and an alternate. The current serving members are Chair Fennel as the member and Supervisor Bone as the alternate, as well as Supervisor Bass, who is the ex-officio on the CSAC Board of Directors. So, with that, I'll turn it back to the board for discussion.
Thank you, Kathy. What I'd like to kick this off with is that I am the member on the board right now, but Supervisor Bass has been very, very involved with CSAC. And over the last, she was the president, she was the vice president, the president, former president, and I would like to nominate Supervisor Bass to represent Humboldt County on the Board of Directors now that she's not in either of those committees. So, I want to get that clear.
And I'd like to do, if possible. Okay, thank you.
I would second that motion.
Thank you. Supervisor Bass, go ahead and...
I just say, thank you very much, Madam Chair. I do appreciate it. It's been a very strange year as past president, that's for sure. So, looking forward, staying involved. And so, thank you very much for that. And Supervisor, hopefully the rest.
I wouldn't mind to stay on as the alternate, but if somebody else wants to be the alternate or Supervisor Bone wants to continue as the alternate, I am totally fine with either Supervisor Bone, you want to just stay on as the alternate?
I, I can. I'm, I'm now representing RCRC on the WIR, Interstate Region, the 15 Western Counties. So, a lot of this stuff like NACO and things like that, I'll be attending without a cost to the county, which is a, which is a, which is always a bonus. So, yeah, I can. So, I mean, it either or.
Let's do that.
Supervisor Bass never misses a chance, so it's not like you're going to have a chance to fill in anyway. So, she'll be there for us.
Definitely will. Mine's not paid, mine's not paid for anymore. I, after this next year, it's like, I'm not going to be figuring that part out.
Yeah. Well, Supervisor Madron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I wanted to thank all three of you for your participation in the state organizations. I think the county is well represented there. And I'm very glad to know that Supervisor Bass, you're going to move back into that board role because I know you'll do us a great service there. So, thank you all for that. And with that, I would move to appoint Supervisor Bone as the alternate.
I'll second it.
I'll second that? Yeah, there you go.
Okay. That's three seconds.
See, there's a, right. So, any further discussion on this item?
I got the point.
Absolutely.
Are we doing two promotions for this item? Because I believe the first one was Supervisor Fennel and was seconded by Supervisor Madron, or is this?
Yeah, okay, let's do the motions separately. Or, yeah, you could...
I, I...
I can change the motion. I'll change the motion. There we go. So, Supervisor Bass as the member and Supervisor Bone as the alternate.
Thank you very much. And thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you.
And is that okay with the new motion that we let that by? I'm sure it is. Okay, good. Okay, now we do have one motion. So, with that, let's go out for a public comment on this item. We have one hand raised and I believe it is seven. Uh, we have one hand raised and I believe it is seven, four, five, four.
Well, I think, I think this is totally appropriate. This is Kemp Swawski here. I refer to, to Virginia's formal name as Virginia CSAC Bass. And, uh, I don't remember if it was at one of those functions, but she, she took one for the team at one of those functions, I remember, and had to wear a neck brace for a while. She's definitely earned it and I strongly support her being allowed to continue in that position. So, and, and thanks, Virginia, for taking care of that. It does, it does make a big difference to have somebody out there who can get along with people and is appreciated and can do that job.
Thank you for that. Any further public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. And Ryan, if you will do the roll call, please.
Thank you Supervisor Madron.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Fennel?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bone? Thank you, passes by vote.
Thank you very much. And again, we echo everybody's thanks to Supervisor Bass for continuing to represent us so well with CSAC. Now we're going on to the Department of Health and Human Services. And we have Director Beck here to talk about, uh, general relief voucher program changes. Welcome, Director Beck.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Fennel and members of the board. Connie Beck, Health and Human Services Director. I'm here today with Ryan Bishop. And you may recall, two weeks ago, we pulled this item, um, because Ryan was busy working at the evacuation center for the fires. And so I just want to say, um, I'm grateful for him to be able to be here today and present this item to you. We are providing an update on the general relief vendor voucher program and recommending rescinding the, the vendor program. So, uh, Ryan, please take.
Thank you, Director Beck. Uh, good morning, everyone. Um, let me just, uh, I have a little presentation here for you. So I'm, I'm going to share my screen so that you can see that. Uh, again, my name is Ryan Bishop and I am the program manager for the general relief program. And let's see, okay, can we see that?
Yep, we see that. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you so much. Uh, the intent of our proposal today is to receive consent from the board to begin issuing general relief benefits for living expenses onto an EBT card rather than by two-party vendor voucher checks. To better understand the proposal, it is important to start by explaining the current program processes. So general relief, or GR, has a maximum allotment of $303 per month, broken down as follows. Housing, $153, utilities, $18, and living expenses, $132. Currently, general relief first issues funds for housing and utility expenses as checks directly to landlords and utility companies. This is not going to change as part of this proposal. We will continue to issue checks directly to landlords and utility companies. Next, a maximum of $30 in cash is issued to the customer in the form of a check. And the remainder of the living expense allotment is just issued as checks made out to both the local vendors and the customer. This two-party check is known as a vendor voucher. Our intent with this proposal is to take the $30 that goes to the client in the form of check and the other living expense allotment that's issued in the form of vendor vouchers and simply apply those funds to an EBT card in the form of cash. The GR vendor voucher program was affirmed by your board on August 25th, 2009, with the intent to provide general relief, freedom of, general relief clients, excuse me, freedom of choice, reasonable access to providers, and to assist customers in demonstrating financial responsibility. As it stands now, the G, general relief program is responsible for signing on vendors that sell items of basic need to customers for customers to purchase. Part of our concern with this current process is that general relief only has 15 vendors at this time, seven of which are small corner stores. There are no vendors in Hoopah and only two vendors in Southern Humboldt. Recipients often lack transportation to utilize the vouchers and often need to allocate, allocate a portion of their benefits towards transportation to utilize the rest of their vouchers. Not to mention, current vendors are mostly grocery stores, which may not have basic essential items such as underwear, socks, warm blankets, and/or even first aid items. The viability of the vendor voucher program has depended on the ability to execute many contracts with retailers that provide basic need items. We have concerns about our ability to meet those basic needs, though it is not for lack of trust. Corporate retailers have no interest in abiding by the terms of the current vendor, the county vendor agreement, and many locally owned retailers do not want to conduct business through the general relief vendor voucher program. Vendors who have terminated their agreements with the general relief program were surveyed on the reason for termination. Reasons included theft by customer companions, difficulty in processing vouchers, and customers not following vendor voucher guidelines. Issue benefits onto an EBT card, and it also has the ability to issue checks directly to landlord and utility companies. Issuing general relief benefits onto an EBT card through C4 can save the county approximately $96,000 a year in staff time. Because staff would no longer need to explain the rules of the vendor program, allocate benefits
I think everyone is back, Estelle, and I was able to get us back up and online as well. Um, Virginia.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, appreciate that, uh, especially with everybody, a lot of the participants being in the court has that, that kind of a strain for sure. So, um, let's go back and thank you very much, Ryan, for that, Ryan Bishop, for your presentation on the, um, GR vouchers. Uh, does anyone on the board have any questions or comments for Director Beck or Ryan on this issue? Okay, Supervisor Bone?
And I, and I missed a good portion of it, I think. I don't know, it's hard to tell. Um, is this still, Ryan, this is, is this still only valid for three months? Is that how long GR still lasts for, is three months or GR ongoing?
Yes, three months for employable clients, yes.
Okay, I just, a lot of people think that people get on it and that they got to understand it's SSI that they get on, it's not GR. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go for a public comment. We do have one person wishing to speak on this item. And that's the number ending in seven, four, five, four. Welcome. Kent, I believe.
Estelle, yes, um, I did have some questions on this and, and I missed a good share of the presentation, so I want to, you know, have them same technical difficulties, I guess you guys are. But I did want to, I, I would hope, maybe they've already been answered, but I'm going to repeat the questions anyway. Uh, I just heard this prior speaker say that general relief is, and I, maybe I misunderstood that, it, it, it's only three months for employable people. So if they're not employable, does it go on longer? Maybe I misunderstood the question that Rex asked there. Um, here, here in the staff report, it says housing under the current general relief housing amounts to 50.8% or 153,000 of the $303 per month per client. Um, so my understanding now that, 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 uh, they, uh, utility companies and a check directly to the landlord. So with this new thing you're proposing, how does the landlord get paid and how are you making sure utilities get paid? How is that built into this card system or something? I'm, I'm not quite understanding that. Um, it also says the EBT card also has a safeguard to encourage responsible spending. This safeguard includes not allowing customers to withdraw funds at gambling establishments or adult venues. Um, where can they then get it? Can they can get it anywhere? I know there's a whole bunch of angst and it was explained to me regarding CalFresh, where are the people up in the, uh, the market up there in Willow Creek, uh, the cashier said, well, I have people coming in here spending this CalFresh thing and they, they buy the best steaks they can. They're rolling up in a, in an $80,000 truck and they are, they are, they're spending, then paying, paying cash, obviously, for their top shelf booze and other necessity. So I don't, I don't know how, how you're regulating this without having special rules on the card. What safeguards do you have to see that these people spend for the necessity that I'm, I'm put to say they need, you know, for food, possibly medicine, rip over their head and utilities? Does this system, uh, make that, have the safeguards where the people who are paying taxes out here can feel that money's being spent correctly? I sure hope so, unlike CalFresh seems to have some loopholes there. So those are some questions I think, think you probably should be aware of. Um, and I, and I'd like to be aware of them, if you could ask any of those. Um, it just, you know, those, those kind of, uh, the system has been abused before and I just would like to make sure that it doesn't get abused and that helps as many people as it can. When it's abused, you're not helping all that you can who really need it. So thank you for opportunity to speak on this.
Thank you, Kent. Uh, I believe that's the only public comment we have. Uh, so bring it back to the board and, uh, I will just, uh, go back to Ryan, but a lot of the issues that were brought up have actually been discussed in the presentation, but maybe you can clarify again, Ryan, in shorthand. So bring it back to the board, and I will just go back to Ryan, but a lot of the issues that were brought up have actually been discussed in the presentation, but maybe you can clarify again, Ryan, in shorthand. With regard to what goes in, what is it going into the card now? The rent is still paid directly to the landlord? All that's going in is the vendor for items that are not food items?
That is correct. So we are changing anything as far as how we pay landlords and utility companies. That is just a check directly to that landlord or utility company, so that's not changing as part of this proposal. What we are changing is some of those living expenses, rather than doing a two-party check known as a vendor voucher, that's made out to the client and a local vendor or a local business, that would just go onto an EBT card, which they could access as cash. Now, some companies do take EBT. For those that don't, you can withdraw cash out of an ATM. However, you can't do that at certain sites. Those would be gambling venues or adult venues, gambling establishments, excuse me. I do think it is important to know that the general relief program is a loan program. Clients are responsible for paying those tax dollars back to the county, so this is a loan program, so I think that's also important to mention.
And with regard to the question about people being employed or not employed, can you clarify that, please, Ryan?
Sure. So somebody, so somebody who is employable generally is on for three months. Somebody who is not employable can be on the program longer while we are seeking assistance to get them SSI.
Great, thank you. Okay, Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, Ryan just covered some of what I was going to ask, but I, so I'd ask him to be a little more specific. I think, I don't think people realize how much it does get paid out over time, and I think people go, well, how can they pay? They don't have a job. So can you kind of just mention a little bit of, well, what you know that's been paid back in the last few years, if you've got any numbers that you can share? But also, you know, the process of once they get a job or once they get signed up for SSI, that's when the money does come back to the county, if that's correct? Be helpful for people to know that who might think that it's money that just disappears. Because sometimes it seems like that could be.
Sure. So there are options to not only work off this loan, but there, if the client is granted SSI, it is also paid back through SSI. So we do recruit those funds. Otherwise, there are tax intercepts where we can actually get that money back as well. And there are a good chunk of clients that also do just self-pay. They just pay it back as they're supposed to. But when that doesn't happen, there are other measures we can take like tax intercepts.
There's actually lanes that we take out on all folks that are getting general relief. And in order for them to buy property or do anything, they're required to pay back their funds. Helping Humble is currently, the folks that are in Helping Humble, they're eligible to work off their loans by our work program, right? That's one of the reasons why we started the Helping Humble program, to increase the folks that were doing work to pay off their loan.
Thank you, Director Beck. Supervisor Bone?
A question and a statement. The question is, how many people are on GR right now? I mean, I know the numbers have spiraled pretty good, but our numbers have gone down quite a bit, surprisingly, but then, I don't know, how many people are on GR now?
They have gone down quite a bit. Currently, I believe the count is 113 clients on general relief at this time.
Okay. And then the other thing, I think people should be aware, we hear a lot about what we're doing and stuff, I get. Besides the GR program, you know, I think it should be aware, and we, sometimes I go, we approved $600,000 worth of money to four different agencies this morning to get out basically another bench, our CalFresh cards, to make sure people are getting, especially school-age kids and stuff, are getting proper nourishment. And anytime you're giving somebody something, it can be ripe for fraud. And I think the GR has changed and moved to get away from that, as has CalFresh. But, I mean, we're spending almost $600,000 with four agencies just today to get that word out to students, families in need, the ones who need it the most. So people are aware that program is aware, you know, that it's there for them, and especially people that are on the border that don't realize. So I, like the GR program, DHHS, you know, we see everything. It's pretty visible to us, but I don't think we see what's behind the scenes, how much people are busting their butt to try to lift these people up, get them nourished, get them housed, and everything else. So this was a good time for me just to give a shout out, because I know you guys are working hard in a tough situation, so thanks.
I appreciate those comments.
Thank you, Director Beck and Ryan. And just what I would like to add is I think that is absolutely the right way to go, to put that in the EBT. It just seems such an unwieldy system before, and very difficult to implement in today's world where everything's electronic anyway. So thank you for making the move to streamline that and maybe getting some more staff over to other areas where they're needed, so thank you. With that, Supervisor Wilson?
I just had a quick question for Mr. Bishop. Was, I missed about a minute, maybe, of the presentation, maybe a little less. I was just wondering, was there anything in the presentation that wasn't in the staff report? This is a question.
Nope, I don't think so. No, there was nothing the staff report covered at all.
Okay, that was it. I mean, I do, I want to echo some of the sentiments expressed by Supervisor Bone related to, you know, really the mechanics of this and the intent. Really, you know, we create these very burdensome systems to try and make somewhat more of an equitable society as best we can, and to mend the phrase on the fabric of society and all the people that work really hard to do this. Obviously, we could use some really fundamental shifts in our federal and state economic policy and taxing policy and basically relief policy to get to something that's more efficient, but this is what we got. And I think that, and I really appreciate staff's efforts to always improve on the delivery of services where services are needed, and this is just a step in the right direction. With that, has a motion been made to approve this, or?
Go ahead, Supervisor Wilson. No, there hasn't been a motion yet.
I'll make the motion that we receive the update, that we rescind the general relief voucher program and then author issuance of the general relief funds through electronic benefit transfer cards, and delegate authority to the social services division to implement any necessary policies regarding the issuance of EBT cards for general relief funds as recommended by staff.
And I'll second that.
Thank you, Supervisor Wilson, Supervisor Bass. With that, if there's no further discussion, we'll go to a real call vote, Ryan.
Thank you. Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Fennel?
Yes.
Supervisor Madrone?
Yes.
And Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you. Passes 5-0.
Thank you very much, and again, thank you for your work on that, Ryan, and thank you also for your work during the fire. Very important. So let's go now to the next item on the agenda, and this comes to us from our human resources department. Welcome, Director Lee. Welcome, Jeremy. And, let's see, this is, I will just toss it over to you, Director Lee. Regarding the payroll program, thank you.
Good morning, Chair Fennel, Honorable Board Members, CEO Nielsen, and County Council, Billingsley. Thank you for the opportunity to present this item before your board this morning. Essentially, staff will be making a brief presentations highlighting the project and available for questions and answers to your board. As you will recall, last fall, the county was facing an extreme significant payroll and organizational challenges. ADP was a choice that offered a unique combination of automation and managed service. Additionally, the product could be implemented quickly and the support is robust. In general, the ADP is a human resource information system, or HRIS, a unified platform for capturing and managing employee data. It also assists with unified management of the employee's life cycle from hire to retire. It has a robust time and attendance infrastructure included. The auditor controller's office and the auditor controller would also be designated as a security master, producing access to most functions. The system's also robust for employee self-service module. The system is also highly configurable, providing departments with flexibility. The payroll process itself would be highly automated. With ADP, the increased organizational capacity would develop through efficiencies and eliminations of duplication. ADP would also integrate with finance enterprise. ADP would also eliminate the Executetime, which is the county's current timekeeping software, in addition to paper timesheet that would require manual entry into the system. I share this, outlines products with you, because I truly believe in the system that will bring efficiencies and will support the entire organizations. And with that, I will turn this presentation to over Dr. Jeremy Clark, who is our project manager. He will be discussing the project and provide an abbreviated product demonstration of organizational efficiency. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Lee. Welcome, Dr. Clark. He is not on mute. I can see that he's around there.
It could be the system, so I will, there he is.
Oh, no, Dr. Clark is there, but his microphone does not, there's no indication of his microphone.
I think he's probably having some network issues in this building, like some of us that are as well.
Yes, mine is also showing that I have an unstable connection, so I will check on Dr. Clark.
I think he's probably having some network issues.
Sorry about this situation here. Let's just take another two minutes to see if we can get the audio back on for Director Lee and Dr. Clark. So two minutes, that's seven minutes past 11.
Hello, testing, testing, testing.
Yeah, hear you now.
I can hear you.
I can hear you.
Yeah.
Yeah, hey, Jeremy.
Hey, good morning, Chair Fennel. Good morning, Supervisor, CEO Nielsen.
Jeremy, we have to wait two minutes.
Since I, I did have a pause, so we'll have to wait until seven minutes pass. Sorry about that.
No, that's quite all right. My apologies.
Not a problem. And Director Lee, is yours working now?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, very shortly, we will have reached seven minutes past 11. That was a quick, quick change, so glad for that.
Go figure that my satellite connection up here in the middle of the forest is better than the connection right there in the main courthouse.
Well, I think, I think what it is
We all go to Steve's house.
So many people on that. So many people on it. I think if we were all at your house, Steve would be the same.
Yeah, come on up.
Okay, it is seven minutes past 11. Back to you, Jeremy, Dr. Clark.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Chair Fennel. Good morning, Supervisors. Good morning, CEO Nielsen. As Director Lee stated, my role is really just going to be to provide a demonstration, provide a little bit of an overview as to the process, because I had the pleasure of serving as project manager, and also answer any questions that the board may have. Before I do that, I'd just like to say that I think that this is a rather unique situation, being situated between your elected body and the elected auditor controller. And before I begin, I just want to say that over the last year, I've managed to cultivate a very positive working relationship with the auditor controller, and it has been largely a pleasure to work with her. And so, consistent and in the spirit of that relationship, I'd just like to say that I'm going to stick to my analysis and the interpretation of the facts as I see them. And because I think the agenda, the agenda item is pretty straightforward, I'm actually really just going to focus on providing the thinking behind that. So with that being said, I'm going to take it back to last fall. Last fall, our organization was dealing with some very serious challenges around payroll. They were in the press, we had some internal challenges, and specifically, they were related to payroll accuracy. Now, I happen to have a PhD, but you don't need a PhD to know that you don't need three organizational systems to manage the employee life cycle from hire to retire. Last fall, as we do today, we were using three internal systems. NeoGov to manage the recruiting and selecting. There's some learning management functionality in NeoGov as well. There are some performance management functionality in NeoGov that has not been rolled out. We use Executetime as our electronic time sheet keeping method. I should also point out that the adoption rate for Executetime, meaning how many departments and individuals actually use Executetime, is less than optimal. And we also use one solution, which is the predecessor of the finance enterprise system that we currently use. So, I should also point out that we also had some challenges around our personnel action forms. And these were, this was a manual process, as was part of the timesheet process. So you don't need to have very in-depth organizational knowledge to know that leveraging paper process systems in the year 2020 is going to produce inefficiencies and is going to be less than optimal. Now, where a PhD is particularly helpful is in understanding of organizational design and how to structure the systems, the processes in support of the organization's strategy. That's the basis from which I operate. So, considering the information above, I just want to assure your board that this process was guided by your board's strategic framework that is available to everyone on the website. Not only, so specifically, excuse me, we sought to support your strategic goal of improved county government operations. We sought to do this through, and specifically, evaluating human resource information technologies. There is a directive in that document that says a goal and a strategy is to evaluate human resource information systems. It is, it also indicates that we want to attract and retain top organizational talent. It also indicates in the document that we want It also indicates in that document that we want to drive employee engagement. And it also states in the document that we want to reduce manual human resource information system transactions. So, considering that direction from your board is articulated in that document, combined with the thorough vetting process that is indicated in the agenda item itself, I maintain that ADP was the right choice. So I'll take a moment just to talk about ADP briefly. I think that ADP is one of those organizations that has a very strong brand. As a matter of fact, they are industry pioneers. As a matter of fact, I am reminded when I converse with my colleague at ADP, Alexander Rohn, that they move so much money in the United States that they are considered critical -- part of the critical infrastructure by the US Treasury. But it wasn't brand equity alone is why ADP was selected. Remember that last fall, our challenges were critical. So we needed to adopt a system that was consistent with the board's strategy that produced an implementation time that would allow us to benefit from these organizational -- from increased organizational capacity through efficiencies. ADP's implementation approach, the supportive resources, and the time horizon required to implement the product was appealing to us. Further, they have a support apparatus that was exactly what we felt our agency needed at the time. Director Lee spoke about the combination of managed service and automation. And ADP represented that ideal combination that was right for our agency at the time. It's important to note that just by saying that ADP was the agency that was best positioned to meet our needs at that time, that in no way takes away from the robustness of products that are offered by some of their competitors. As a matter of fact, I maintain to this day strong relationships with representatives from those competitor companies. So, what else is critical and that I'd like to convey is that any time you work on a project of this scale, collaboration is important. Collaboration in many forms. Collaboration, the project team that I have the pleasure of leading, we collaborate frequently with our ADP counterparts. Internally, we have to collaborate with other organizational stakeholders to obtain their input, their feedback, and ultimately, design processes that are effective for their use. The project team, it should also be noted that the project team that I lead has dedicated many hours to the success of this initiative, in addition to their primary roles in this agency. And for the longest time, we enjoyed broad support and participation. The Office of the Auditor Controller is a critical stakeholder in this process, make no mistake. And we undertook every effort to involve the Office of the Auditor Controller in this I just want to make that clear. So, perhaps ADP is not the ideal solution, but that die is cast. To expand Finance Enterprise now, ironically, would deny the HR Director her ability to choose the human resource information infrastructure that she feels is best positioned to meet our agency's needs. Not to mention stand in direct contravention to the priorities of your board as articulated in the board's strategic framework. Other items to consider would be, if we move to Finance Enterprise, who would maintain responsibility for rolling out that product? I think as my colleagues from ADP will tell you that do this for a living, this is a monumental undertaking. It's not flipping a light switch and saying, "Friday, we operate in current state, and on Monday, we'll be in the future state." Who's going to be responsible for the education resources that are required to educate staff? Will the system provide the flexibility for our departments to make the transition to the new expanded capabilities very smooth? Those are questions that remain. I can assure you that I, as a public servant, my director, Director Lee, Assistant Director Barnes, we are committed to moving this organization forward and will wholeheartedly participate in any initiative as directed by your board. So, before I transition to just provide a brief demonstration of the technology, I'd like to ask my colleagues, Alex and David, who've been kind enough to join us from ADP, if they have anything that they would like to add, with the understanding that they are very familiar with our processes. These were the consultants that have been with us since inception of this project.
Hi, this is Alexander speaking. I don't really have very much to add, other than I think that Jeremy Clark, Dr. Jeremy Clark, made several very solid points, and I just want to reiterate that, you know, we don't make ourselves a financial system because we integrate with any financial system on the market, so be it an Oracle, or an SAP, or anything like that. You know, we just look to map to the GL and play nice there, and then we stay in our lane when it comes to human capital management, HRIS, and payroll. So, there is no, I guess, desire or need to, you know, disrupt anything within your financial system. In fact, I think we will complement it and reduce a lot of the data integrity issues between the two things. So I just kind of wanted to throw that out there. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much. Mr. Safford, did you want to say anything?
Thank you. For expediency's sake, I'll just answer questions if they are directed my way. I'll let you go on with your presentation.
Thank you very much. Back to you, Dr. Clark.
Okay. So, I'm going to show you a brief demonstration of the ADP platform, and I hope that Alex and David do not cause too much damage to their teeth, because they will undoubtedly be grinding them, because I am not a demonstration expert of ADP. But I do think it's important to just display and provide your board with a vision of what this platform would look like. So with that, I'm going to go dark on my camera and share my screen. Can you see my screen?
Yes, it's right there. Thank you, Dr.
Okay. So, this is not the typical starting point that our workforce would see when they log into ADP. It goes to my platform, and so I want to demonstrate using a fake employee that has been made up, because I don't want to broadcast anyone's personal information. This system does contain some employee-level data. So, here we have Emily employee. So Emily has been identified as a legal secretary. You see that on this screen, we have her position number, we have her hire date, we have the status, and all the information that we need. We see this duplicated here in this position tile. We also see that Emily reports to me. We can go over here, we can see Emily's status is an active employee. We can see that this is, she's a new hire, that this was a new position. And right here, through supporting documents, we have the ability to add, attach, and associate any documentation that was associated with Emily's hire or position in that new role. An example of that could be, perhaps Emily served in a different role, was promoted, and was, we wanted to produce a copy of her PPAF and attach it there. You also see the salary information. I would say that Emily's a bargain, the county is getting her for zero dollars. We see corporate group as well. When the system is fully populated, we'll be able to see the home department for Emily, the union group, and all of that information. A lot of this information can be edited at the discretion of the manager. We see the associate ID. We just see a tremendous amount of information that managers have available right at their So, we also have the ability to store emergency contact information. We actually will have the ability to store, should we choose to, the physician of the employee should any emergencies take place, as well as contact information for emergency contacts. Now, let's look at A. I'm going to stop sharing because that was an actual employee, and so to respect that employee's privacy, before anything was broadcast, I stopped sharing, and I'm going to go to the home screen. So we're still working out the kinks, but... Okay, I am going to begin sharing again. So, this is the page that our county employees will see when they log on. So here we have the... Unfortunately, ADP has company mission, or public agency, so the word "company" not necessarily applicable, but it displays our mission, our values, and our focus nonetheless. And these are statements that have actually been made from your board. We actually see that our open enrollment announcement is populated in the system. These are the actual dates of open enrollment. Over here, on company events, we have our all-hands training day. We have the information that is contained here, so that way our staff can be guided and be notified of key events upon logging in. We have quick links, one to Human Resources, a link to our HOMNET, our internal intranet, and then we also have some ADP news here that is available. So, what we can see is that logging in, HEJ, of the technology is a repository for organizational information, all in one place, reducing the need for people to go and visit other websites, which increases efficiency, which should theoretically increase productivity. I should also point out that making connections to the flexibility that departments are offered, this information may also be created by departments. So let's say that Sheriff Hansel wanted to have his staff view unique sheriff information. They would have the ability to structure this page, so any of sheriff's staff would only view sheriff information. And the same for DHHS. They've obviously got quite a robust mission, vision, values statement, and so they would also likewise have the ability to communicate information to their staff there. I do want to just see if I can get through this and see, without displaying anyone's information, just to show you what the processes look like, we can hire, retire, we can add positions, we can terminate, we can place employees on leave. I think probably one of the best functionalities of the system is mass changes, and this is where if we wanted to make a change that, let's say, was applicable to all of our APSME employees, we can do so to that population by using this link. There are also quite a robust amount of reports that are available to help us guide our agency and help us make our transition to being a data-driven agency, and this data is at the fingertips of our workforce. And before I stop, I do want to say, I didn't demonstrate it here because that's not within my capability, but ADP has a very, very robust employee self-service module and app. So employees would have the ability to take pictures, and through workflow, we would be able to determine the approval paths for, say, someone wanted, someone had a child and they wanted to submit a copy of the birth certificate. So, I think that gives you a general idea. I mean, at this point, I'm going to kind of go to Alex and David. I know they're probably punching their walls, but what I missed...
No, no, this is Alex right here, and I just, I want to kind of make it known that, you know, what we're looking at here is very much an in-progress environment, as we are still marching towards, you know, our go-live date. So this is something that's currently being implemented and is very much still a work in progress. So if it was kind of slow at any point or moving things around, that's why. The other points that I would point out is that, you know, not only is the comment that Jeremy made earlier about us moving, you know, more money second only to the Fed, you know, as part of the critical infrastructure, but that also means that we have to comply and follow all of the federal data policies around being part of the critical infrastructure. So that level of security that comes with it is in addition to, I would say, just a demonstrable level of trust, you know, that the US economy, you know, counts on us to move $2.1 trillion of money through the government. So, just wanted to point that out. I thought your demo was great, Jeremy. Did an awesome job. You can definitely get your honorary ADP badge. But, yeah, yeah, every point you made was fantastic, and the mobile app is great. People can do things. For example, you don't have to pass a check off to do, you know, your direct deposit. You can just scan the transit, EBA, and routing numbers right there. That way, there's just less intervention, less opportunity for human error, and things become a lot more in the hands of the individual, and there's less ownership on, I would say, the tactical things from an HR standpoint, so that you can focus on the strategic things in your, you know, your board goals and missions versus, you know, filling out direct deposit forms all day or things like that. David, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I was just going to say, the only thing I would add would be that what Jeremy showed you is available in English and Spanish, so the user can flip it over to whichever they prefer. And then if they're using the app, it takes advantage of the iOS, the operating system on the phone, so that could use the system in any of 35 languages, 35-plus actually, that they so desire. So it does make it very accessible to people, as well as the online system being available. It is enabled with something called AudioEye. So if you ever get asked as a public agency, "Are you making your systems available for people with visual disabilities, visual challenges?" You could say yes, because the system can do everything from read the page to them to flip it over to high contrast if they're colorblind, or any of those kinds of things, or the system is equipped for it. So it makes it very accessible as well.
Thank you, David.
Chair Fennel, I would just like to ask if data side... I've asked some of our GL experts or consultants to join us, just so they can answer any questions that may be directly related to the GL, because that's quite specific information. And so I just wanted to see if they were on the line. Ryan, are you able to confirm?
I don't see either one of them in the attendee queue. If you go to participants, you can take a look as well. I don't see anyone. If you do, please let me know, and we can get them in the meeting.
Perfect. Okay, fair enough. So, with that being said, before I conclude, I'd just like to say, kind of going back to the GL document, collectively, the project team in our agency has made tremendous progress on the implementation of this board-directed initiative. However, we've reached a point where to continue that process and to make our go-live target, we really do require the submission of a completed GL document. and to make our go-live target, we really do require the submission of a completed GL document. And again, I can't say enough because I can understand if you're on the outside looking in, this can look like it's a combative issue. But as I've said before, I hold, I hold Karen Paz Dominguez in, in high regard and welcome her participation at any point in time. And with that being said, I'm available and happy to answer any questions the board may have.
So what I would like to do at this time is either see if the board has any questions or go to Ms. Dominguez, Paz Dominguez, if you want to add anything. And also maybe go back to Director Lee, if you want to add anything. Yeah, let me start with that. Director Lee, do you want to add anything to Jeremy's presentation at this point?
Thank you, Madam Chair. All I have to say is that I and my team truly appreciate your time. This role, this system is robust. No system is perfect. And this is the system that we need today to take HR for the county of Humboldt into the 21st century. We want it to be efficient. We want it to be a transparent process. We want it to be flexible and accessible for all of the employees who are truly serving the county's workforce. And I am truly looking forward to the opportunity so that we can roll this program out and to really demonstrate to the county workforce that we are committed to them, to serving them, and to give them the tools that they can do their job effectively. With that, I will conclude my remark. Thank you.
I think at this point, it's been referenced already that the object of this is to direct the auditor controller to provide the general, the general ledger mapping document. So I would like to hear from perhaps Auditor Controller Paz Dominguez, if you have any comments at this time. And I notice also there are treasure tax collectors there, but I do know that this specifically addresses your collaboration in this venture, Ms. Paz Dominguez. So if you wouldn't mind, to give us your thoughts, please.
Oh, no, not again.
Hello.
There you go. Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I appreciate the opportunity to provide a response, maybe feedback. I'm processing what I've heard and what I've observed. This agenda item was news to me on Friday. I did not read it before it was published and I've spent all weekend processing. I have sought the input and the guidance of several people across the county. I've talked with the auditor controller team. I've even made myself available to discussion in various public forums. And it, it's difficult to, it's difficult to easily say, yes, I'm all in. But I've prepared, I've gathered my thoughts because I do, there's emotion involved. And I don't want to, the emotion, emotion to be what drives the conversation. So if you'll allow me just patience while I take deep breaths and pauses and stick with what I've mapped out here. I also was not aware that there would be an opportunity for presentation of the softwares. But if you'll allow me, I do feel confident in my ability to demonstrate the software that we currently have to provide you just more information. That way, whatever decision you do decide or whatever decision you do vote on, you can say without a shadow of a doubt, you considered everything and your decision is sound. So my thoughts here. This situation that we're in right now is a win-win scenario for me, me the person. I win either way that you go. If it goes to ADP, I never have to deal with it anymore. I have more time to do other things. Maybe I'll see my kids more. If you decide to keep it in-house, great, we can invest in the software. I can train a lot of people and we'll seamless transition because the data already exists here. However, I am not here to serve only myself and my agenda. And the reason why there is a disconnect is because there is an expense. There is an additional cost to the taxpayers to pursue ADP. That cost, for me, I, I'm looking at the opportunity cost of it. What are we giving up by spending the money here? And in the time of a pandemic, it's difficult for me to happily say, yes, let's spend this money. And so that's where the challenge is for me. The, this agenda item also is requesting that your board direct the auditor controller to do something. That is also challenging for me because the auditor controller is an elected position. There is no situation where it is warranted that a governing body directs the actions of an independently elected department head who is, does checks and balances to that governing body. And it is also hard for me to reconcile how the public that elected me gets a say in my actions if the board can choose to direct my actions. Of course, I'm open to hear all of your feedback on that, but I express it to you as a challenge for me. In my opinion, there's the real option, the real choices that the board can make is to work with me, to ask, to request the auditor controller. Because I'm not really just here as myself. I represent a department. There's people behind me, there's people with me who do this. Or you can ask to not ask me for any help and I can continue my work. There is a government code. It's Government Code 26883, where the board does have the authority to direct a very specific action of the auditor controller. And that is to direct me to perform an internal audit over any of the county departments or over any of the county funds. Directly related to that government code is Government Code 26884, which says, "In the event the Board of Supervisors elects to require the county auditor controller to perform those additional services," meaning the internal audit, "it shall have the power and it shall be its duty to provide the proper appropriations for any additional personnel, equipment, supplies, or expenses made necessary thereby." So if this government code exists to support the board in directing the auditor controller to perform an internal audit, so too do I think we would have to apply it in this event where you are asking me to perform something that is outside of the auditor controller duties. Every action I take is guided by government code in any of its forms. There is no government code that says the auditor controller must participate in another department's outsourcing endeavor. If your board decides that the best, the best choice is to go with ADP, then I have a decision to make. I can let you all go and hope it ends up well or I can help. I understand and I am aware that, you know, all of the consultants that have been hired, all of the project payroll managers that have been hired, the advice you've received does not provide you the specific expertise that you are asking me for today. And if I don't help, then it might turn into a bigger problem down the road. Having said all that, I am willing to assist under some conditions. Those conditions are that some of the misstatements on the staff report be corrected. That is not my cellphone. Okay. Some of the, I, some of the timeline in the item does suggest that I have been an obstacle. And regardless of the press releases I issue or the news articles that get written, this staff report is what becomes part of the county's record. And so it is important to me that it reflect accurately how we ended up here. I'm not going to nitpick line by line. I could. Would it help? No. I might lose some listeners. It's boring. This stuff is boring. I get it. But there are some things in here that do cause damage to the credibility and reputation of the auditor controller. Specifically, there's a section, there's a paragraph that says, "It was not until the initial committee identified ADP as best positioned to meet the county's specific organizational needs and that the committee would be moving forward with a recommendation of ADP to department heads that the AC began to withdraw from the process." This is not true. On February 26th, the then interim director of human resources sent an email to all department heads notifying us that they had just requested that the boards let them go into an RFP process, but they decided to cancel it and instead just award the contract. My response to all department heads on February 26th, after finding out that HR had already decided which direction they were going in, was, "Thank you very much for your communication, Kelly. Please let me know if I can assist in any way. I will check in with IT and the One Solution Upgrade Core Team to see if we can prioritize this process over the Finance Enterprise upgrade. We will need all users at the ready for an upgrade and it would be a smoother process if we're not running two different upgrades at the same time and making staff learn two new and different sets of instructions. With payroll being as critically important as it is, I am advocating that it get top priority." That is what I said in response. That was on February 26th. On February 20th was the first reported case of COVID-19 in Humboldt County. At this point, there was no certainty of what was going to happen. Shelter in place was not something anyone was talking about. We didn't know the impacts. And as you know, the impacts were great. We did shelter in place. Our offices shut down. Our employees went home. It definitely impacted all of our operations. As I said in this email, I did reach out to the IT department and I asked if, can we prioritize payroll? Can we do both? What is your preference? It was the IT team who expressed to me, "It is not a good idea to pursue both projects right now. We don't know what's going to happen." Okay, I communicated that information. And because both of them were critically important, Finance Enterprise being my direct responsibility, I elected to direct my efforts towards Finance Enterprise. Finance Enterprise doesn't just serve this county organization. It serves the Humboldt County Office of Education and all of its hundreds of school districts. And it serves all of the special districts, the fire districts, community service district, lighting districts. And so I had to prioritize that upgrade. I think it was in April, the HR department brought an item to the board. And it said, "Due to the limited availability of the auditor controller, they needed $35,000 to hire Bob Cessnon in addition to $185,000 to Coa Hills." They were going to act on my behalf because I was not available. And now we are here. And all of these vendors have been hired, they have been doing work, they have received payments, but I'm still being expected to perform. I would prefer that this staff report be amended to reflect, not only was I supportive and helpful, but there is a critical reason why I withdrew. And it had nothing to do with ADP being the, the company chosen. My other conditions, one is the timeline. Right now, I am getting pressure from all directions to close the county's books for 1920. It is a big endeavor and there are hundreds of funds that need to be reconciled. And we are making progress, but this kind of stuff pulls away from my capacity, from my ability to perform my actual functions. And so the timeline would need to be adjusted to allow for me to finish closing year end, to allow for me to finish the cost plan that needs to be submitted to the state controller. Everything else we can be flexible about, but those two things are critical to the entire county, not just my department. The next is, given that asking for my help requires this much attention, this much time, it is reasonable for me to request that I have a seat on the executive sponsorship committee. It is clear now that I am a payroll expert, a general ledger expert, and the committee currently does not have either of those. And in order to ensure that this pro, project, if it is in fact what you choose to follow, if, in order to guarantee that it's successful, you will need someone with the relevant expertise on that committee. My, uh, my next condition is resources. I may be one person, but I am covering the tasks of three different positions. The auditor controller department used to have, not that long ago, two assistant auditor controllers. One of those positions was filled by my predecessor, Joe Mellett, and the other position was filled by my other predecessor, Cheryl Dillingham. It took both of them to serve under Michael Giacconi as assistant auditor controllers. I am right now serving with only one. And if it were not for her, this place would be upside down because she is the only one with the extensive expertise related to property tax. If I pull her from that, property taxes, that whole function will suffer greatly. I do not have an executive secretary. That was also a position that resided in the auditor controller department. I don't know what happened to these positions, why they're not there anymore, but they never stopped being critical to the successful performance of the duties of the auditor controller. I am acting as my own invisible assistant auditor controller, my own executive secretary. I'm monitoring four different inboxes in addition to my own, which is why some of you aren't getting responses from me. There's only so many hours a day. Email alone could be 40 hours a week. But I am also acting as a senior accountant auditor, where I am reviewing journals, posting journals, reviewing charges, calculating differences, reconciling. I am three different people in one. And so if you're going to pull me away from my team, then you need to make sure that they have the tools and resources to be successful. Lastly, this is a new condition that has just come up 10 minutes ago. I would like to ask that you give me two minutes of your time to let me share my screen and show you what Finance Enterprise, the system we already have, can do. I ask for that only because I am trying to save taxpayers. I ask for that only because I am trying to save taxpayer dollars by not adding additional costs. So I will wait to hear from you. Those are my current conditions, and I would be more than happy to help. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Cara Paz Dominguez. All of the preceding conditions, that must be a decision of the board. The decision about sharing the screen is mine, and I would like to invite you to share your screen. For two minutes.
Two minutes? That is all I ask. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I asked for two minutes because I wasn't prepared for this. I didn't know this was going to happen. But I feel competent that I can walk you through this very quickly.
Thank you.
This is the main screen in Finance Enterprise. These are all of the different modules that it has. I have already set it up to hide everything that's not relevant. Here's the human resources module. This is the payroll system module. They are separate because there needs to be segregation of duties in this regard. These are all of the options available to us. I'm scrolling, and it ends right here for HR. And I'm scrolling, and it's got all kinds of activity. I'm scrolling, I'm scrolling. Here's everything that is possible for payroll, just on your left side. We're not going to click on any of them because I don't have time. I would like to show you that I am currently in the Human Resources Information System workspace. There's the auditor controller, the county fiscal team, which all departments use. Here's mine, where we do the backend work and human resources information. There is a dashboard. Here's everything you need to set up a new employee, do time cards. There is no need for paper time cards already. I am not sure why we are continuing to use paper time cards. Pay-related assignments. Here's recruitment. We could do away with NeoGov. Applicant master, applicant posting, applicant requisitions. Talent management. I've heard the board often ask questions about, you know, race, gender, diversity, inclusion. We have the tools within Finance Enterprise to track that information. And the only reason you're getting these exclamation points is because they haven't been set up yet. But they're here, and they tie into the data that already exists. We also have benefits. It's sitting right here. We could know the benefit cost by FTE, by department. Position control. Right now, there's no clear total, how many positions we have, because the numbers don't balance between all the different agencies tracking them. This is already here. There's instructions that exist. I will stop sharing my screen. There are instructions that exist for every single one of these modules, every single one of these masks, which is each one of those buttons. And the majority of fiscal staff are already familiar with this system and how it functions. IT, their expertise, already includes this information. I am not saying that ADP can't do it. They can. They excel at it. That's why they have so many customers. I am only thinking about this organization at this point in time, when time is precious and dollars are precious. And we consider that maybe what we have is not broken, just not being nurtured. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paz Dominguez. At this point, I'd like to ask members of the board if there are any questions or comments on this item. And I don't, okay, so Dr. Clark, you have your hand up. Would you, did you have something else to add?
I do, Chair Finlan. I'm not sure if this is inappropriate, but Alex from ADP would just like to clarify a few things that he thinks would be a benefit.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. Two really quick points. I keep hearing the word outsourcing being used. And I just want to let you know that what we have proposed and what we are moving forward with is not an outsourcing model. I mean, if I was going around in public sector, I work exclusively with public sector organizations. And using the word outsourcing, you'd be looking at an empty chair right now because that's pretty much like the boogeyman. So we're not outsourcing anything. What we are doing is providing technology and support, the people, the process, and the technology. That's kind of the humanity behind our company. And that is what you will be receiving. There's not, you will still need payroll staff. You'll still need individuals to process those things on your behalf. So I just want to make it very clear that there's nothing that we're technically outsourcing. That there is that model available, but I have to this date zero public sector customers doing that. It's very popular with our corporate and commercial entities. So I just want to let that be known. And then also, it's just as one really quick note. As, you know, an advocate for Humboldt County, I would never in a million years advocate for you to get rid of NeoGov for any system, ADPs, or One Solutions. NeoGov is a gold standard for government recruiting, and that's why we integrate with it seamlessly, and we never disrupt it. I would leave that piece exactly where it is. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Alexander. Any of the board wish to comment or say something, questions, anything at this point? Supervisor Wilson?
I just had a quick question related to our employee interface. And is there any significant differences between ADP and Finance Enterprise related to the employee interface?
Is that directed toward me or Alex?
Alex, I'll just hand up.
Yeah, I can answer that. There is a significant difference. At ADP, we are always producing and developing based on like a mobile-first friendly platform. So we do have the number one app in the App Store, on the Apple App Store. It's between one and three. It's got over a million five-star reviews. The user experience is second to none. What we were seeing on Karen's presentation was really kind of the administrative view on a financial system. And we don't make a financial system product, but that's because we don't deal with GLs and general ledgers. Again, we leave that to, you know, the ERPs of the world. So I would say that there is a very strong reason that people partner with ADP, and it is primarily the employee self-service and the user functionality and the ease of access, the accessibility. Things like David was mentioning before, you know, the Americans with disabilities, for example. So that's something that we definitely excel in versus an ERP. You're not going to have really, I would say, anything resembling an employee self-service. That's much more for exactly what Karen's using it for, which is an auditor controller to manage an organization's finances. There's not really a componentry of employee self-service in there because, you know, a person that works for the county isn't going to log in and make changes to your general ledger. You wouldn't want that. So that's kind of the difference. They're really apples and oranges.
I have a question for Linda, if that's all right?
Yes, please go ahead, Supervisor Wilson.
Thank you. Linda, and I've talked to you about these options and some of these things because it's definitely in your wheelhouse for sure. But Linda, I mean, can you, just so we're understanding, you know, what's, you're relatively new to Humboldt County and in this organization, and been here some four months or so. But, I mean, can you sort of outline your experience with these types of systems and kind of your background in terms of, you know, what you know? And I don't mean specifically to ADP, but just as an understanding in terms of, you know, in terms of offering expertise and guidance to us as supervisors in this arena?
Thank you, Supervisor Wilson. In general, my experience with ERP system varied over the years. I've gone from a full ERP system that is built in-house by an organization that is robust, crossing over the finance systems, the employee systems, to serve over 10,000 employees. I've also have gone through an organizations where we transitioned out of One Solution because it did not meet the capacity for that particular organization. And we transitioned it over to various platforms, including NeoGov, which is a robust standard system for hiring and practicing, learn models, performance models, but again, those are brand-new systems under the NeoGov. As I said in my opening statements, there is no one simple system that best work for any organizations. As an organizations, we have to determine what is the appropriate, where we are today, what are the capacities, what are the needs, what are the challenges? In my humble opinion, I have been here since June 29th of 2020. So today is my 90th day on the job. On the last three months, what I've learned is that we have so many systems that do not integrate, that require staff manual calculations. Especially timesheet should not be paper timesheet. We should not have duplicate systems, execute time, paper system, roll into Finance Enterprise or the backend. We have so many systems, and from an HR standpoint, when we do timesheets audit, that would be so complex. It is my sincere hope that whatever the system that we choose today to move forward, that we work as a team to make sure that all systems integrated in a way that serve the organization. But in particularly with ADP, I am accustomed to see some of their structures, integrations, and how that will best employees, especially with their app, to make it mobile-friendly for the employees, to make it easier for our payroll staff to do manual, I mean, to perform automated system without going through so many tickets requests to do system calculations that we are now finding, or at least I am finding, that this county is not in compliance, so that we have to address those course correction. And that will require more customer service, heavily involved with IT to develop the system, the calculations, the automated calculations, for all of us to do the job on this side of the house. But to answer your questions, with a limited amount of time that I've been in this agency, I do know that we all have the spirit of collaboration, that we want to move forward to find what is the right solutions for the county. The board supervisor made a bold decisions back in March of 2020 to move forward. It is my sincere hope that the board would allow the project team to have this opportunity to move forwards, to complete the project, and find a way that we can integrate and overlap with Finance Enterprise and to basically keep the two systems that will also secure, you know, the segregations of duties. What goes in into the HR side will also be confirmed and validate on the finance side. And I think that will add more value to that internal control systems. And that is all I have to say, Supervisor Wilson.
Okay, I mean, I think that's what I have for questions in the current context. I'm ready for other input or deliberation.
To acknowledge what the oversight, I know that Ms. Paz Dominguez wants to say something, but I also saw Alexander with his hand up, and if this is in reference to clarifying any specific technical issues, I'd like to hear that, please.
Yes, I really just want to let you know, again, we do not have a financial system, but we do have what we call ADP GL, and that maps per customer to all of your specific requirements, needs, whatever you need to see in your GL. It is extremely customized. I have never once received negative feedback on it. So you can have your cake and eat it too. You can have your HCM system running smoothly and efficiently. And you can also have it posting all relevant data to your financial system. And I just wanted to give David just a quick opportunity to just kind of spell out, you know, real quickly how we would post to the GL and how those systems would integrate, because it is quite flawless. David, could you just talk a little bit about ADP GL, please?
Sure, just very briefly, just to say that the formatting is something that we ask for upfront so that we can set it up to be exactly the way it needs to flow into the financial system without any intervention. So if you need dashes, if you need slashes, if you need things in certain order, we could do allocations if you need to do that. Anything that we can even encumber things if you need to do charges back to, one of my clients, the only customer they have is the federal government, and they need to set up a standard burden rate on everything. But all of that can be set into the general ledger so that nobody needs to touch it to move into the financial system. It can be automatically FTP'd to the location of your choosing, following every payroll. So all that the financial system would need to do would be grab it and bring it in. So basically, like Alex said, and I think Jeremy said it as well, that you get the best of both worlds, the flexibility of both systems.
And then that mapping would be automated going forward, so there would be no need for anyone to, there's no ongoing maintenance unless something is to substantially or materially change in the way you record things on your general ledger?
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Paz Dominguez?
Thank you very much. I've been taking notes. I've been listening, again, leaving the emotions out of it. You asked if there was, actually, no, you didn't ask, but it was pointed out that the screens I shared with you were more from the auditor controller perspective. It's kind of true, but it's not just limited to me being able to access it. This is what all county departments are using. All county departments run their pre-list reports from here, their payroll information. They're getting from the system. It's not tied to me. And I just want to keep being clear. This is not about me. So there's that. There is Employee Online. Finance Enterprise does offer a separate platform for employees as users, not employees as administrative staff. We have a manual. We already have it. We have a manual that walks us step-by-step how to turn it on, how to use it. In this Employee Online platform, employees can change their address, get, update their W4, get their W2, apply for different things through that platform without having to use Finance Enterprise. It can all be done through Employee Online already. There's several big agencies that use it successfully. I'm not their salesperson. I don't get any money from Finance Enterprise or Central Square, I promise. And it is true what Linda shared with you, that One Solution was outdated. Yes, that's why we upgraded to Finance Enterprise on August 3rd. I helped IT run that implementation. I participated with testing of it. I brought departments in. I got their buy-in. They sat with me. They did their own testing at the department level. We had meetings. I showed them the screen. I talked them through the process. I gave them the timeline. I kept them updated every step of the way. And on the day where we did finally implement it, we started the day with a two-hour Zoom meeting so that I could show them, they could try it. And for that whole first three weeks, we were in implementation mode. If departments struggled, they jumped onto the Zoom where we have our virtual office and asked us immediately. There was no delay. There was no ticketing system. They just clicked on the Zoom and got the responses. That's how I run an implementation. Experience, I'm not sure that Supervisor Wilson's question was really answered because out of all of the department heads in the sponsorship committee as it currently exists, and the managers running it, or not actually the managers, but the consultants, I'm the only one who has actually run payroll for this county. It's happened in my office. I'm the one printing the checks. I'm doing the taxes. I'm doing the quarterlies. What I can't do is make sure that any of them are accurate. That's what's been taken from our department. So the GL mapping document that is being referenced, that is getting all this So the GL mapping document that is being referenced, that is getting all this attention, I've already completed it. But they don't like the answer. The mapping is here's all of the different pay codes. Which line item do they go to in the general ledger? Which object code do we put them in? I put the right answer of what it currently is. What payroll is currently doing is posting all of those different codes to an object code 7,000. 7,000 is trust fund expenditures. It is a problem. It's been identified by our external auditors in all of their audit reports. But I have no control, so it is the one place where I can't correct that. So, you know, what you also need to understand, by asking me to fill out this GL mapping document, it's more than just filling out the Excel. I first have to clean it up in our current system. I have to remap the object codes in the payroll posting strategies first, so that ADP has somewhere to put them. But I gave them what it is right now, which is just 7,000. That's the disconnect. I filled it out. It's not to their liking. It's not to my liking either, but I don't have control to change it. So asking me to fix it means also giving me control to change it.
Thank you, Ms. Pazamangas. I see Dr. Clark, Clark, he wanted to add something.
Thank you, Chair Fennel. I just, I just wanted to point out that part of the reason that ADP was chose was for precisely this reason, in that it caused minimal disruption to the Finance Enterprise GL side, while also providing a robust human resource information system and time and attendance software. So I just think it's important because we've explored a lot today to note that that is one of the reasons that ADP was selected. And then, if I may, I mean, I think it was alluded to that I'm not a payroll expert, and I want to be absolutely candid. I am not a payroll expert in no way, shape or form. What I do have is process expertise, PhD in human resource development and organizational development, comprehensive understanding of organizational systems and how they operate. Now, I understand the auditor controller's affinity for Finance Enterprise, and I think that that is completely acceptable. Where the challenge comes in is if the argument is, so keep in mind that Finance Enterprise is an upgraded version of one solution. I think that our IT team would tell you that the user interface has changed, but all of the nuts and bolts, so to speak, of the system have remained largely intact. The problem that you get from a change management standpoint, when you're making the argument that the answer to our challenge is, is a system that we've had for the better part of 25 years, that, that's a difficult hill to climb. And that's not just me. I'm confident that any management consultant or anyone with change expertise will tell you that that is a difficult argument to make. So I just felt like that was important at this point in time.
I don't know how appropriate this is, and I'll just throw it in there because people are giving their opinions. It just kind of reminds me of the transition in terms of computer use and internet, et cetera. When, when we were all, you know, I'm old enough to remember when this was much more of a challenge for everybody. And, and you might be cobbling one program with another, basically with duct tape. I mean, I would say even the leaders at Apple and Microsoft were working that way. But we're, we're beyond that, to bear in mind now. And we have more robust systems that will carry us through into the future. So that's kind of how I see this, is that we really do need to, with this opportunity, move to a more robust system that is more updated, that is not cobbling updated, you know, from one solution to finance, et cetera. I don't know, is that appropriate to make that, that that comparison that we're going to want to find a solution? Alex? Yeah, okay. That's where I feel is like we have, we do have these tools and we can make them do something, but we've got one robust solution that will take care of it. And that's, that's what I think is attractive about moving in that direction. Supervisor Bass.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I've got one question, but I think I'd start out with a, you know, trying to put these things together. It's almost like, it feels like we're, you know, I don't want to be pitting one like department or something against another. I'm looking at this more from the organizational structure aspect. And when I look at that, I'm thinking, okay, this is a bigger issue than just any one of our departments, I think. It's for the health of the entire organization. So it's kind of trying to look at it in that frame. But one of the things, you know, and I'm interested to hear, you know, after public comment and some more conversation, some more discussion, but one of the, one of the things that had been brought up by the auditor controller was about, you know, saving taxpayers' dollars because obviously we don't have enough dollars. Taxpayers, you know, certainly don't want us to be wasting dollars. And, you know, I have said, I've seen some information that says, well, no, you know, this is the cost to save. This is how much, you know. Can we have a really good, at some point, maybe, maybe Ms. Pazamangas can give her impression of exactly what those tax dollars that the cost is going to be and where they come from, because I think we're seeing that there's actually savings when we look at the bigger system. So I feel like there's a disconnect in not having the same information or the same, this information doesn't have the same components. I don't know, because I'm looking at two different things going, well, this actually shows the potential savings, but I'm hearing the auditor controller mention costs to the taxpayers. So I'd like to see if we could finally, or get a little more, hone that down a little bit if possible. And I don't know if this is the appropriate time or maybe after public comment.
Okay, well, I did see you nodding your head there, Alexander. Is there something you wanted to add on there?
Yes, I just kind of wanted to add on to your comment earlier about how, you know, in a fractured, kind of cobbled together ecosystem, the main issue that you have there is the exposure, risk and liability. So for example, in the filing of quarterly tax statements, ADP would file those on behalf of the county and we would be responsible for the accuracy and the timeliness of those filings, which is something that would give bandwidth right back to the auditor controller's office. So through automation and through mitigating a lot of that risk and compliance, that's what you fix by getting rid of that situation you were talking about earlier, which is kind of, you know, duct tape and everything holding together, right? So I think that has to be taken into consideration when we're talking about a total ROI or total cost of ownership here. And that being said also, this was not available at the time, but I do have an independent third party that would be more than happy to engage here. And they can help you create any kind of ROI or TCO studies through ClearView. They are a third party. It would be nothing ADP specific or proprietary, but they could help you kind of draft that up, and I'd be more than happy to offer them as a resource to the county.
Thank you. Dr. Clark, you had your hand up, but I don't see where you are. Did you want to respond to that?
Oh, my apologies. I don't, my apologies, Chair Fennel. I don't think I lowered it, so let me lower it.
Okay, it's your time. Supervisor Bass, and then.
Alexander, and I know you guys do, I mean, five, 700,000 businesses and over 5,000 government agencies, but the cost, I know we had a little, somebody at IT that I ran into, we had a glitch last week with our payroll and and thank God for IT and the auditor controller and our payroll staff stayed together till, I heard till 7:30, 8:00, 9:00 at night and convinced US Bank to make sure everybody got paid on Friday. But if you had a computer problem or, you know, lack of data that we, something failed in our IT system, had nothing to do with any of the departments, something failed in IT from what I understand. When something happens to you guys, you guys still pay us and you guys don't charge us for your failures, right? It's just a straight, you know, because those are the hidden costs. We never see if we're going to compare costs, so. Is that a question that you could understand?
Yes, I do. I understand completely. Thank you. So first off, I would just like to make the point that those issues don't really happen to us that often. We pay about one in six Americans do benefits for about one in eight. Should that happen, you can still process your payroll and true up an issue later. You can go back and retroactively do a quick calc or something like that to kind of fix or mitigate the problem. But we do have 24/7 support. If there's something that happens, which is not a byproduct of the ADP system, but something else in your ecosystem like IT, you know, we can help you troubleshoot that as well. We are here to be your partner through this service model, you know, in all events and cases. And we have 810,000 clients and all of them have been paid through COVID. No one has missed a payment. Through the entire pandemic, 810,000 clients have been paid.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, at this point, oh yeah, Supervisor Wilson?
Sorry, I turned off my video just so I don't want to overload our system. Because I feel like maybe that's part of what's glitching out here. So I just had, there was something mentioned about from the auditor controller related to Finance Enterprise being used for all our special districts. And I was just kind of wondering, is there, is there some sort of interface issue or that we should be thinking about in terms of that? Or I just, I just wanted to make sure, I just want to get a little more information on what that means.
Well.
Am I allowed to answer? I'm not very clear. Okay. I see everyone say bored. May I throw the chair? I never want to just jump in. So, okay. Yeah, you have really perked me up. I've heard great questions, great topics. I want to answer Supervisor Bass's, Supervisor Bass's question about savings. Love that. For Supervisor Wilson, when I said that Finance Enterprise is used for all special districts as part of why Finance Enterprise was where I invested all of my energies is because it's fully integrated with the property tax system that the assessor uses. And so every special district has a fund within our county treasury that is recorded in Finance Enterprise. Their transactions are posted through Finance Enterprise. They send us their invoices. We pay them through Finance Enterprise. Finance Enterprise would also allow, if in the future, special districts who already struggle finding volunteers, finding dedicated, not dedicated, but people who are able to dedicate a lot of time to the special district. When they lack that, we can cover for them. We can issue payroll for them through Finance Enterprise without it intervening with the county's payroll. That's what I mean by it's integrated with special districts. And if I may, I would like to answer Supervisor Bass's question about savings. This, this was a tough lesson for me to learn because I was a compulsive shopper back in the days when I had no money, only credit, learned some lessons there. But I would see 50% off, 75% off, and I would think, oh, I'm saving money. I wasn't actually saving anything. I was paying the remaining 25%. So what saving actually is, is literally moving money from a checking account into a savings. That is what I would consider saving, not just getting a discount because you're still paying something. When I say costs, additional costs, what I've heard the representatives from ADP say is that this would be an additional cost that doesn't include any reductions in IT or payroll support, as it says in the letter and the staff report. In fact, he said, you'll still need to maintain NeoGov. You'll still need to maintain your staff. This is extra. That's what I mean by adding a cost. And I'm, I've also caught a contradiction here where ADP saying that they don't outsource, yet I've heard they're going to be taking the responsibility for doing the quarterlies. That's the reporting to the federal and the state agencies about our payroll activity. That is a task of the auditor controller. So what it sounds like to me now, having heard that, is that you are asking to, actually, you are outsourcing tasks of the auditor controller, not that you're not outsourcing. And this payment situation, we issue the payments in the auditor controller, and we too have not missed one paycheck. It's been a struggle here and there, but every time payroll happens, payroll gets issued in time. Where there have been situations where an employee is underpaid or not paid at all, that has been due to staff error, not system error. So I'm happy to be able to clarify that, but this is not saving. This is spending more in addition to what we're already spending and outsourcing the duties that I'm not sure should be outsourced. It's outsourcing the duties of the auditor controller. And please consider again, this agenda item, this recommendation is not coming to you from the auditor controller. So if the suggestion is that one department can direct the outsourcing of another department, I think a larger conversation needs to occur in order for me to fully understand how this government operates. I want to be on the same page with everyone. I'm following along, and these are the questions that this is raising for me. So I appreciate any feedback or any additional questions.
Thank you, Ms. Pazamangas. CAO Nielsen.
Thank you, Chair Fennel. I just want to talk about the cost a little bit. There is an annual cost to ADP of $459,000. There is savings when you talk about utilizing IT and HR resources. Currently, we use a number of IT resources to support Finance Enterprise. That would not be, that would not necessarily, it wouldn't be necessary when we transition to ADP. We also use a significant amount of HR resources. I'm not saying payroll resources. I'm saying human resources, like like the project manager, the assistant HR director and the HR director. There's a lot of staff time that goes into the current payroll system. And there would be savings that would allow those folks to do other, other things, other more, other assignments that also support your board's strategic framework. So there would also likely be some time savings for the auditor controller, although we'll have to have a business process review to determine all of that. We can have more finite numbers for your board. Once the business process review is completed, we're delayed in that because of the general ledger mapping document not having that. So we do anticipate there to be some actual savings that could go into a savings account as well as improved efficiencies for departments, so they could focus on other activities. I just wanted to provide that explanation to your board.
Thank you, CAO Nielsen. Any further comment before I go to public comment on this item? Further discussion? Okay, I'm going to go to public comment on this item. And as with all items, we go to public comment. If you are watching on access humble, you can call the numbers on your screen. Otherwise, you can call those numbers. We have three now, and when you get the prompt, you can, you can join us by pressing star six. So I'm going to call out the last four digits of your phone number, and you will be next up. So the first number is 3053, and you're welcome.
Good afternoon. Thomas Mulder here. I just want to clarify, you can hear me?
Yes, we can, Thomas.
All right. So first off, I have concerns just following along with this meeting. I don't know the backstory to it at all, but showing a presentation, if I look at the agenda item, it says the agenda item is ADP project implementation. But then during the comments, there was a screen shared. I didn't get to see it, but it was promoting a different company feature or whatever that the auditor controller, I think that may have been outside the purview of the agenda item. I don't know. I'm trying to understand and get a better grasp of what's going on within the county. And I feel like there's a big power struggle. And I feel like there's a big power struggle between the, a couple of different department heads. I mean, I see a lot of things blasted out on social media and it just, it seems really, really unprofessional. I just want to know how much money, by this general ledger not being updated, how much money, taxpayer money is that costing the taxpayers of the county right now? How much, and it sound like CAO didn't have the quite answer my question I wrote down. How much money would this save our county if we implemented this project? And the other thing is, were these, during COVID, were all the department staff of the auditor controller's office that needed to perform these general ledger updates, were they provided their full salary? And if so, I was looking up, I saw just the only two people I could see. One was 130 some odd thousand and one was over 100,000 with benefits. So maybe if we spent more time working instead of arguing, we could get to, get a lot more things done. Like I said, I don't know the backstory to this, but try to work together, get some efficiency in there. And it's not a fire hydrant. Let's get it done. Thank you.
Next caller is 7454. Welcome.
Estelle Kansawaki. Thomas, you got it. You hit that one on the head. Okay. I'm looking at first a letter from Human Resources. And I want to disclose, I have not communicated with Karen Paz Dominguez, our auditor controller on this topic. But I get this letter from Human Resources and it's unsigned. It's respectfully. It says, we are part of it. We are writing urgently request. Do you comply with the Board of Supervisors directive and adopt and if it is incomplete, GL mapping document as quickly as possible? And that if you are unable or unwilling to complete the document, be advised that we will report to the Board of Supervisors your lack of engagement. Complete the document. We're going to tell on you. So this seems to be very childish and I don't know who signed that particular document. You had a group that was working on this. Said it should be noted, the auditor controller was traveling in business December 16th and thus unable to attend the evaluation meeting. This was not purposely done, but rather reflected the realities associated with the coordination of multiple schedules. The AC communicated concerns to the project manager and offer was made to have the AC participate by phone if able. Ultimately, the AC was not able to participate in the evaluation meeting. But anyway, goes on with the work. But clearly, I think you had a four or five person meeting. And in today's thing with communication stuff, that could have easily been rescheduled. And when somebody has a perception they're being left out of the process, I don't think they'd want to play. I don't want to play when I get left after the thing. There's also notes in here, a few other things. Basically, that this was to go to an RFP. And I think that was even suggested by council that it was, should be to an RFP. And all of a sudden, that changed. Let's see. Upon further discussion with the county ministry of purchasing and county consul, it was determined that county would issue a formal RFP to ensure a fair and equitable process. So instead, you decided not to have a fair and equitable process by not having the RFP. That was advice upon your council. I don't know who advised you to do otherwise. But those kinds of things always alleviate the angst that the public has. Now, I find this all very interesting because at any time, the Russians could be, I believe the term is knocking on your door and they can totally wipe out your whole computer system totally. It's gone. And then, of course, if you send them whatever they want, a million or $2 million, they give it back to you. And I'm going to be quite direct with you. I don't care what firewalls you have out there. But we see all the time that ADP could be easily hacked into and dealt with in the same manner. I don't know. I think maybe this is a great way to go, maybe not. There's a lot of questions out here. But when a process goes through on this side and you have two different sides, and I can see both sides, but I've seen one side before where someone is not willing to communicate with the auditor controller and therefore you don't have communication. It's the way or the highway. When you have a couple of people that get off on this way, bad things happen and this is an example of that. So anyway, I find it very interesting. Thomas, just to let you know, the payroll department has been so dysfunctional over the past years. I think probably one of the people who was handling payroll basically probably drove Joe Mallett to drink. And it was that bad a thing, that bad where someone's trying to wag the dog and control their department with them and build their own little kingdom. So that's what this is all coming down to and don't know the fix, but you need to change some things. Thank you. My opportunity to speak.
Thank you. The next caller has the last four numbers of 5499. Welcome caller.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, thank you. This is Drew Redden from AskMe1684 again. Thank you for the chance to speak. To put some of these numbers into perspective, so respectfully, when the CAO says that there's going to be savings, but also acknowledges the $459,000 yearly cost to ADP and that we're going to have savings because we're going to be able to move some things around from HR and IT resources, which are some of the smaller departments in the county. Respectfully, my members have seen the average of a 1% raise over the past several years. And the CAO's office at this current time says a 1% raise out of the general fund is worth about $313,000. The county's said that they, you know, cried poverty. We don't have any money. Meanwhile, since fiscal year 1516, the general fund's gone from $8 million something dollars to 25 million is my understanding of the current general fund balance as of fiscal year ending 1920, from 8 to 25. But these employees who are being told the county has no money while they're in, you know, departments that have 20% vacancy rates and they're doing three times as much work, they're being told, we have no money and yet we're going to go spend for ADP an extra $459,000 a year, which is more than the cost of what we were willing to give you a raise forever each year. And meanwhile, we're going to maybe save money by moving some stuff around. But that's, that's 1% for 1,500 employees. So I mean, when we're talking about the cost, 459,000, we're talking about like 1 and 1/2% raises for the amount of all 1,500 employees that we represent. And meanwhile, though, payroll hasn't really shifted or changed. Payroll departments aren't going to see outsourcing. They're not going to see reductions in numbers. And your payroll managers who are expected to do their job, that are making somewhere around $85,000 in salary or $70,000 in, for the assistants that are expected to do payroll work, who have been part of these challenges that were critical. They're not moving. They're not doing anything. In fact, there's been one person added, which I believe is Dr. Clark. And according to what I can find, I think is being paid something like $44 an hour, which comes out to something like $90,000 a year. That's been added. And we have just a lot of concern about where you're spending your money and how this is happening when we already have systems that can fix it and if we're talking about being efficient. Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. The next caller has 3443 is your last four digits. Welcome. You might have to press star six caller in order to be able to speak. There you go.
Hello there. My name's Jim Hussey. I'm a senior accountant auditor with the auditor controller's office. I'm calling in today because I wanted to, first of all, thank everybody for having this discussion. And that I've enjoyed seeing ADP and their presentation, how it will function. And I can assure you, if this is the direction we decide to go, I, for one, will happily and enthusiastically help implement this new system. That being said, I want to kind of build on what Drew had just finished saying. I've worked for the county for 12 years. Started in the CAO's office, been purchasing as a fiscal one and then moved over to the accountant, the AC's office as a senior fiscal and have moved up to senior accountant auditor. And I've noticed a pattern that I find rather troubling. And that pattern is that our, our county would usually, when faced with an issue or a crisis, their, their solution of first resort is to go out and hire outside consultants or buy a new piece of software that sometimes it just ended up getting, gets thrown in the trash because they don't, you know, it doesn't do what we want it to. And we also, and also to, I mentioned consultants, but also now we're looking at outsourcing part of our work to the tune of $450,000 a year. But what we don't seem to ever want to do is focus on bolstering the people in our own county, the employees. We talk about wanting to, you know, save time in IT. IT is severely understaffed. We don't have enough people to help us get Finance Enterprise working properly. And like, and that's probably one of the reasons that we were given. It's like, well, Finance Enterprise, we don't know much about it. It's like, so this ADP, they've got their own, they've got their own staff. Like, we could take some of that 450,000, bring in some more IT staff so that we could bolster what we already own, what we've already paid for. And then, and then do the same on the auditor controller's side. And then HR side, if we need to, take that $450 and invest it here in the county instead of going off and spending all of this money elsewhere. I think that would, it would definitely benefit our county much more than doing it that way. And frankly, I prefer we would use items that we've already spent good money on rather than leaving them on the floor and going off and and getting new services. Anyway, I think I've said, well, I have to say thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hussey. And I believe that is all the public comment we have at this time. Bring it back to the board and also in, Connie Beck. Asking Director Beck to have your hand up.
Thank you, Chair Fennel. And I feel like it's a good time for, for me to just talk about, maybe a little bit. I'll share a little bit about what we've done over the past six, seven years around payroll. And I think it was about six and a half years ago where we, as department heads, was able to look at a few different systems. And we actually looked at ADP at the time. And for whatever reason, the executive time process and the current payroll system was chosen. And we went through years of transition to this payroll system that's been super problematic. I, I'm not an expert in payroll. But I have talked with my staff that I'm spending an awful lot of time doing workarounds on the current system. I got a list from them of 14 different things that the system can't do. I understand that the current Finance Enterprise may be able to do that. But we've had this dysfunction for the, for two or three years now with payroll. And our staff really, I just feel like our staff deserve a functioning system. And if we're talking about savings, the amount of time that our staff over the years have spent on this system that's dysfunctional is, it's just not appropriate, right? I look forward to having an app and, and other things that employees can access. Yeah, so I, I hope that we're able to move forward. I guess we'll go one way or another, but I'd certainly like us to have a functional system for our employees.
Thank you, Director Beck. I know that Treasury Tax Collector John Bertoni would like to say something. Can you wait for that Supervisor Bass? Okay. Treasury Tax Collector Bertoni.
Good afternoon, Chair Fennel, fellow supervisors and staff. I am Treasury Tax Collector and I am on the executive sponsored team for the ADP project. And I fully support it going forward just for the sake of managing our resources to the best ability we can. ADP, they are the experts in payroll, as is indicative of their huge use across the country. And I don't want to go deeply into the weeds at all, but there are lots of things that are, are happening in the county today that I think that by contracting, continuing the contract with ADP will alleviate a lot of pressures that are built up into the county for various things that are not functioning as well as they may be, just like Connie referenced a minute ago. And I believe we have to work together to achieve results. And county operations should always be organized and managed by consensus. Once consensus to implement a particular procedure, policy or contract is decided upon, then it's bound county departments and all the individuals therein to work together as a team to put them in place. Now, if, these operations are very complex. And so there was a consensus made. Your board directed that ADP be contracted with for payroll services. So now we are far along in this process. And whether there's direct savings to the taxpayer now, I do not, I don't know. But what I do know is that there is a lot of staff time being expended now for things that are not moving the county forward, that are costing the county a lot of money in staff time, which is not being utilized efficiently and effectively. And I think ADP, by going forward and getting them set up with the county will, as I previously mentioned, alleviate a lot of the current staff time that is being wasted in, in unproductive ways. So I leave it at that. I appreciate your giving me time to speak. And again, I support the project fully. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasury Tax Collector Bertoni. Supervisor Bass.
Thank you, Madam Sharon. Actually, thank you for having me wait because I appreciated what the Treasury Tax Collector said. I completely, that helps me tremendously. I can tell you that. You know, one of the things I wanted to say is, you know, I, I don't spend a lot of time on internet anymore because, or social media, because things like spin out of control and go places that they probably don't necessarily mean to go. But, you know, I did want to mention in our thing where it says direct to the auditor controller. And I, I think people are, were reading that a lot more strictly. I think we use the word direct often throughout these, whether it's directing the Treasury Tax Collector to, you know, some, carry out something that we've decided. So I, I hope people can understand that that was not, in fact, I think we've had direct in at least 20 times when it's come to this one office in the last year. So I hope people can kind of look at that word as not the literal word that people are trying to infer, if that makes any sense. One of the questions I did have though, so where we're at now is we're trying to get the business process review done, which is delayed. Maybe this question is for Jeremy through the chair. I'll let Jeremy come back on.
Yeah, absolutely. Go ahead. Do you have the question?
Yeah, that's part of it. It was a, so my understanding is we're, we're delayed currently in the business process review. So I just wanted to get that confirmed and then I have a question on that.
That is correct. The original due date of that document was July 16.
So, and I guess my other question would be, when that business process review does move forward, what is it going to tell us and is there going to be, if something shows up that's really wildly not what we expected, are there off ramps, you know, to not move forward with ADP? I'm going, what, what do we get from that business review? Because I'm just curious if it's just, what exactly is it going to provide for us? Because it seems like it's very important and we need to do it one way or the other.
Sure. I guess one way to look at it is that ADP does not operate in the finance system space. So they have no knowledge of how our finances are structured, how our GL is structured, how really anything is structured. And again, that
Um, and again, that was part of the beauty of that solution in particular, because it required no change virtually from how finance enterprise is structured. Rather, it sought to accommodate the structure of finance enterprise. So that's important. To answer your second question of ADP's model, and I think the public will be happy to know that ADP's model is that they, no payment is due until after you go live. So even though they've invested, yeah, Alex is grinding his teeth over there again. But, um, ADP has invested at this point, seven months of time across the project team, across the sales team, across our GL consultants. Uh, we've explored ACA reporting, you name it, we've done it. They have dedicated so, so many resources to this. So we could pull out. I, I, I'm unclear as to what we might discover that would cause us to, um, pull out. Because some of the items that, that, um, the auditor controller mentioned earlier about special districts and the like, we can accommodate those.
Okay, well, that's helpful. It's just if there were something, knowing that there is an off ramp, if there's something wild that showed up that you weren't necessarily expecting.
There, there is an off ramp. I, I do want to just remind your board, though, that one of the items on this item, this agenda item, is the adoption of the MSA. And that is the actual agreement that details the contours of our relationship and payment. So.
So then you, can you clarify? Sorry, Madam Chair, through the chair. Um, I thought I heard you just say if we decided somewhere, then then there was an off ramp. But if we sign this, you said there's not an off ramp. So I just need a clarification of what the reality is.
I'm not saying that, that there's not an off ramp, uh, because the off ramp always exists. And I will leave interpretations of the contract respectfully to counsel because I'm not a lawyer. Um, but I would expect that if for some reason we were unable to complete our relationship, that ADP might expect to be compensated for their efforts thus far. Um, not my job to deal with that, that's a policy issue, but I, I, I mean, I think that'd be fair. They have, the, they've dedicated significant resources to, to this project.
But you don't see anything specific that you'd think would pop out at this point, so.
Nothing that would derail the project. I mean, again, we've got to think about, ADP provides payroll services to small, medium, and and very large corporate enterprises across America. I mean, and they work with many public sector organizations. So there's, I can't say with certainty because we, we don't have the document. But I, I'd be surprised to, to, um, discover something, especially at this late in the game.
All right, I was just curious with that review, what it would actually show us, so. That's good, I'm good for now, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Bass, Supervisor Bone.
Yeah, I, I mean, we can still discuss this and, and everything else, but last March 3rd, we voted on this unanimously. And I haven't heard anything that's going to change my mind. I think the ADP, I, I was pretty amazed, one in six people get paid by ADP. But I just, and I know that the Auditor Controller's office is stretched really thin. And I, and I, I definitely heard what she was saying. But we'd heard this before on March 3rd. We've been hearing a lot of dialogue in between and definitely seeing stuff on social media. People keep sending me, I'm not privy to a lot of the people's pages. But, um, I just, I just think for the benefit of the county and the savings, I'd like to make a motion that we take staff's recommendation and, uh, move forward with it.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion from the board? Supervisor Wilson.
Thank you, I have a couple, a couple of things. One is, I just want to go with, kind of express my experience in the past. I mean, I have done, I've been in two, one, one local manufacturer in my business of my own that did, that did, uh, transfers or did move in-house, uh, payroll to ADP. Um, both those were successful at those times. I will say that in my own business, we actually moved back away from ADP, uh, just because of the size of our, of the company reduced to such a level that it actually made sense to move back into a, basically a local contractor to do that. But I will say the advantage of both of those was the cross-platform standardization that occurred, both at the small business level and, and sort of the medium business level, that, that as a tool, it had, it had other, you know, when, when we were, were able to transfer away from ADP, should we choose to do that, that it's there, we have a standardization that, that had occurred and, and the, I'm hap, I was happy with that. Um, I, I also feel like there's, you know, when we're talking about this balance of, of costs and, and I, part of the thing is, is I, what Supervisor Bone mentioned is that we, we really did litigate this already. Um, uh, you know, back in March. I mean, that, so, um, I, I think what we're being asked to do today is really just reference, um, reference, um, you know, so there's a relationship moving forward with, with Auditor Controller, uh, to see where we, where we can go. I want to say that there is a cost of this and there are savings. And I know some of them seem oblique or not in obvious. But we're hearing that in order to even address the issues that we're having now, that, you know, we're, there's likelihoods for new hires to have to do so, some of those things. And we're also hearing about stress within departments about, you know, not having, um, really the resources to do the jobs that they currently have to do. And we hear that in every department and, uh, we certainly feel it in our own lives for sure. Uh, and I do believe that there is, there is a potential, I, I, I think it's a real potential that, that as, uh, the Auditor Controller says, there's a win in terms of freeing up some time for, uh, for really, um, bearing down on some of those duties that already exist. And I, I just want to, and I'm hoping that, um, if we move forward with this, that, that we see the fruits of that. And I also, you know, I, I do appreciate the, um, the user interface element of ADP. I do have, uh, in my past have also had success or, or a positive experience with that. Um, you know, I, I felt, now I'm kind of going to go into the, the part about this where, you know, where's the relationship issue? Um, or the, in terms of what was being asked by the, by the Auditor Controller, uh, in terms of, you know, looking for that consensus. And, um, there was a list of items that were asked for, um, or that were asked about. And I think, I want to kind of summarize that and see if the motion maker and seconder would be considerate, consider these items, because I think they're not, you know, framed in the way that they need to be. I don't think it's so bad. One was a request for, uh, for an, uh, a, an amendment to the staff report. I personally, that won't bother me, that amendment to the staff report. I, I doesn't need necessarily the timeline per se. And it doesn't really, um, probably the omission of the sentence that, um, that Auditor Controller asked for is immaterial. You know, doesn't make, won't make a lot of difference to me personally. But I do think if it's, if it's a gesture that we can put forward to have that removed, I, I don't want to articulate adding things into the staff report necessarily. I don't think, but I think it'd be, I think it'd be good enough just to remove those things that, that have been asked for. And I would just remove the entire timeline. The one thing on there was, it was, um, the, uh, participation on the executive sponsorship committee. I, I think that that is already set up for, for the Auditor Controller to be a part of. And so I don't see that as being an issue. I want to make sure that that's, that's, that's all right. Um, there was the resource. And I think one of the things that the message I received or we received from, you know, through the Auditor Controller, and kind of the main point was, that I, that I got from it was that, you know, with an already overloaded workload, to do what needs to be done, to just get this report out, um, uh, was expressed that maybe that would be a distraction from, from the workload. And was, there was a request for some resource to help do that, just to get this report done and out the door. And, um, I'd like, if I can, the CAO to, when I'm done here, to potentially enumerate, uh, what that might look like so that we could potentially add that as a, as an amendment so that we can get past this point. The last thing on the list was an executive secretary. And I can't, I, I think that's, we can't quite get to that space because that's really adding staff at this level, w- w- that is just not on our, that's not on the agenda, really. We can't, as in terms of, um, you know, we can't do that because it's really wasn't agendized to that level. And I, and, and it's certainly a discussion that we can have in the future in terms of staffing. But, um, I, I don't, I'm not sure we can, we can get there. Um, so I guess I kind of have like this, I went down this list. I think there's five things on there. Four of them seem to me fairly reasonable, or reasonable enough, um, and in terms of relationship. And I would even ask that, but, you know, if, and if we could amend the staff report to, instead of, uh, instead of direct, instead of using the terms direct, which I think, you know, Supervisor Bass brought up is, can be misconstrued, just request, right? We'll make the request. And I think, I think there's, you know, uh, and, and just so we're not, um, because we've heard from the Auditor Controller that, uh, that, you know, she, she'd like, uh, some give in this, in this, um, in this situation. And I think it's where we are where we are and we do need that consensus. And I, and I'm willing to have that. So with that, I'm asking for the staff report changes that I put out there, which is really just the removal of the sentence that was requested as well as the timeline. Um, the addition of the, um, of the Auditor Control to the Executive Sponsorship Committee, if she's not already on it. Uh, and then some enumerated resource to, uh, help the Auditor Controller get the report that we are requesting that, that we do. That's, that's my, that's my request of the motion maker and the second. If, and I, if I need to clarify, I'll do my best.
The secondor's fine with it, but I'm only the secondor.
I have a question.
Let's go on with the discussion. Somebody may else want to change something like mother may I or something, I don't know.
I have a question from, from, um, Dr. Clark, Director Lee, or the representatives from ADP about the timeline. And as I understand it, you've already spent a lot of time and that this was meant to move forward in July, as I recall. I'm just wondering about this request about the timeline and what, where that would land.
So, um, I, I'll answer that, Chair Fennel, just because I have the most familiarity with our project plan. It, it is going to be very close. Uh, we chose January the 1st, 2021 as a go-live date because that is the cleanest point to introduce a new system. Um, and not, not to mention that, but again, these, these, these plans just don't happen organically. And so there was time that was invested writing a change management plan, which detailed the involvement of critical stakeholders that was supported by an education plan. Those timelines have, um, since come and gone. And so there are some, some, some changes that we'll need to make. But I'm confident that if we were to, if we are to act with expedition, we can, we can meet our go-live date.
And I do.
Sorry, go ahead.
So keep the goal, keep the goal of January 1st, 2021. Yes.
I, I, I don't, our project team has been, has invested significant time and energy into meeting that date. Of course, your board reserves the right to make it Q2. Um, I'm not the best person to make the, the, um, to discuss what, what the difference between a 2021, 1121 go-live date is and a Q2 go-live date. Because it's kind of in the weeds in terms of quarterly preparation. And there's some other financial implications that I'm not aware of. I can certainly follow up, but I think we can meet, I'm very confident we can make 1121 work.
Thank you. Uh, Director Lee, did you want to say something? Didn't know. No?
No, Madam Chair, I, I agree. Um, the commitment is to make sure that we can go live on 1121. Um, it will continue to be our commitment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
If I, if I may add one more thing, just because I think it's important. Um, again, I want to make this very clear. I, I welcome, we welcome the participation of the Auditor Controller. I do just want to highlight that traditionally, and what I mean by traditionally, if you were to read, uh, management literature, organization literature, a person that serves as a sponsor of an activity is an ardent supporter usually. So I think that that's, that's something to consider.
Thank you. Supervisor Madron.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, really appreciate the robust discussion and the way that everybody has come to this discussion today in an attempt to work together. Um, I think one of the first things I heard from, um, our Auditor Controller was, she does want to help. And, you know, I latched on to that because I think that's what we all want to do. We all want to, we all want to help. But the fact is, change is difficult, you know? And we made a lot of investment, uh, in certain directions and stuff. And now we're shifting in another direction. And that, that's difficult for all of us to, to deal with. Uh, I do agree that we already have headed down this road. We made some decisions back in March. And now we're here today trying to, uh, make good on those decisions and move us all forward as a county. Uh, jobs matter to me, and I know they matter to all my colleagues and everybody else in the county. Uh, I do believe with changes like this, while it may cost almost a half million dollars, I do believe that this really does, uh, move us forward in a state-of-the-art, uh, way that will lead to savings, there's no doubt. But in any big change like this, there's a cost to accomplish that. There is a cost to, to make that, uh, that possible. Uh, but I believe that with that change, while some tasks may be eliminated, just like any kind of change, uh, there is so much work to do here in the county. Uh, there is no shortage of work to do. And so we will all find a way to reinvent ourselves and to focus on the tasks at hand. And I don't see us losing jobs here, uh, by taking this on. I really do believe that, uh, you know, we will find savings in the long run and maintain positions because there is more than enough work to do. Um, I did feel supportive of the comments that Supervisor Wilson made about some of the changes that he would like to ask the motion maker and the seconder to make. I would certainly, uh, feel more comfortable with those changes included. Um, I think what we have here today is a, an attempt for us all to find some common ground and find a way to start rebuilding some trust and respect for each other. So, um, you know, from that perspective, uh, again, I think amending the staff report as recommended, uh, making sure that the Auditor Controller has the resources necessary to do these tasks, while also still making sure that those other priority tasks of the cost plan and the other item that she mentioned can get done. So I think we need to work, uh, with that department and with the Auditor Controller to make sure those needs are met. Um, and I do think it matters in how we ask for this. Uh, I appreciated all the comments that were made about requesting versus directing, et cetera. Uh, I don't think the sheriff or the DA would take kindly to us directing them as electeds. And, and while I think it may be a small point, I do think that, um, making it a request is a way of honoring, you know, working together. Uh, and I would, I would support that as well. What I didn't appreciate was your comments, Supervisor Bone. I, I'm not sure that you realize when you're doing this, but your comment about, oh, maybe somebody else might want to say something like, mother may I? When you say things like that, it's derogatory. And it really puts down what Karen was trying to say. She was saying, can you respect my position as an elected and request this of me? I do want to help, but she's just asking for that respect. And when you make a comment like that, I don't even think you realize, uh, how it.
I realize everything I do. And a lot of what you do, thank you.
Sure, no problem. Go ahead and interrupt me when you disagree. But at any rate, I'm not trying to create a challenge here or stir anything. I just thought it was a great opportunity to offer to you an observation that might be helpful. That's, that's all I'm offering that for. That's my intent there.
I appreciate that, but through the chair.
Uh, yes, Supervisor.
Terminology direct is giving that person the opportunity to manage or govern. You can look up the, the description. We have directed, Super, our Sheriff Hansel, we have directed a lot of electeds and a lot of staff. We direct staff on a daily basis through, I mean, I can show you, I can. We direct staff on a daily basis through, I mean, I can show you, I can pull things up. We direct. That's not a derogatory term. I'm sorry I said, "Mother may I," but I'm just, we're getting to this day and age. I says, "Would you please do this for us?" Direct is just, it's a common term used all the way through that we are directing. We voted and now we're directing. It's not derogatory. It's nothing in those effects at all. But if we're going to Websterize everything we say, I can pull a lot of other things out of here. And I appreciate you, you know, looking out for me. I'm, I, I will make it. I will survive. But we did this seven months ago. We voted on it unanimously. I've heard everything that's been said. I appreciate you looking out for the other elected officials and things like that. But, but I'm okay. But what I'm saying is when you, when you change it, I mean, we can ask respectfully if you want. I mean, I, I think it's ridiculous, but we need to let staff know that we are not going to use the word "direct" in anything we do. Because if I'm going to not, if we're going to take it and worry about what it feels for one elected official, I am not surely going to do the people that I, that we work with every day in our office that we direct. It's written out, we direct staff to do this. We direct staff to bring that paper forward. We direct staff to implement. We need to find a word that everybody's going to be warm and fuzzy with, you know? And out of great respect for my mother, I said, "Mother may I." So, "Mother, may I ask you," that, that's, I mean, you know, something, I just, to take this to that level in this day and age, I understand. But we use the word "direct" on almost everything we do throughout this paperwork. And now we're going to change this. And if that's what we want to do, then take it to the clerk of the board to make sure that word is stricken from anything we do. Do I think it's ridiculous? Oh, yeah, but.
Supervisor Bass.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to go back to Supervisor Wilson for a moment with, because I, well, a couple of things. I know he mentioned, I thought you said there was like four or five things that you thought were reasonable. And I know we have three and that, I remembered the one that was a little too much. So I just want to make sure I'm not missing one of the, you know, there's the amendment to the staff report, which actually would also, whatever we decide whether we're going to replace the word "direct" with "request." And then being on the, the team or whatever it is, the, and then you wanted something from Amy. You were curious what the, what could be brought onboard to help the auditor control. Or it sounded like what resources, and you had mentioned asking the CAO, and I just don't think she's had a chance to bring anything in front of us yet or to talk about it. So that's my main thing. I was just like, can I get a little clarification from what she is taking away from your amendments you, you suggested?
Yeah, I mean, I'll go to the CAO, but I think my understanding of it was that a request for help with completing the general ledger mapping document.
And I just.
With that one particular item regarding the trust fund, as far as I remember. But anyway, CAO Nielsen?
I think that was my understanding as well, that this was assistance with the general ledger mapping document. If that's not the correct interpretation, then I see Supervisor Wilson nodding his head. And yes, that's absolutely something that we can provide to the auditor controller.
Okay, thank you for clarification.
And, and just, would that be in the form of our staff or would that be in the form of professional assistance? Or I, I just don't know where.
I think, sure. I think that would require some communication with the auditor controller. We do have some professional assistance through a couple consultants that could be offered to the auditor controller. If there's something else, something internal, you know, I think we would welcome that conversation to find out what, what can be done to help complete the document.
And this one last clarification related to timeline. I mean, there, we've just kind of brushed on. We'll still try to get to it, to, to the goal that has been enumerated. But if there is a require, if there is a need to extend that for some reason, is that, is that going to cause, what's the, what's the potential ramification for extension of that timeline? Should that be needed?
So the extension for the timeline, because this is payroll, the, the calendar year is actually pretty important. And so, you know, switching your, your payroll system in January 2021 is an ideal time. And I think Dr. Clark could also provide some additional context.
Sure. And again, as I, as I said before, it's just the cleanest breakpoint because everything starts anew. And so I, I would have to console, the beauty of the, the ADP model is that we leverage expertise from many different fields. So I'd have to discuss the exact specifics with, with our payroll expert to see how that impacts payroll.
It seems, I mean, if I can just throw in my thought on that, it just seems to me that if we provide the resources to, to help the auditor controller complete the mapping, it shouldn't have an impact on the timeline. I mean, that's basically how I would see it anyway. Any thoughts on that? Okay, so I'm going to ask counsel on this because.
I'd like to ask auditor controller her thoughts on that, if we could.
Okay, okay, great. That's after I was just saying, in terms of counsel, we right now have a motion on the table. We're discussing that. In terms of input, it must come in the form of a question to department heads. Am I correct, counsel?
Chair, I think you're free to speak with the auditor controller. Obviously, that'll have an impact on the motion that's on the floor. I think you would probably want to get the whole situation clarified.
Yep. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So a question from Supervisor Wilson to Ms. Paz Dominguez, please.
Thank you very much. Thank you supervisors, thank you Supervisor Madron for the consideration and respect. I appreciate it. What you're, this is, this is more than just asking me to fill out an Excel document. I am already, I was already working on a project called the Chart of Accounts Restructuring to fix all the object codes, to make it so that it complies with the State Controller's office. That's been a project of mine for a year. I stopped my project to accommodate the CAO's project through IT to implement finance enterprise. Also, COVID took, had a direct impact to my ability to complete that project. In order for me to complete this GL mapping document again, I need to finish my chart of accounts restructuring so that I have new information to feed ADP. Without completing that project, I'm only going to send you the same document that I already sent because nothing will have changed. I, I've listened. I, I, I thought I would be very emotional. I'm not. I stand by my earlier statements. I am willing to help under these conditions. Without this consideration, I will have to decline. I don't want to do that, but I am at capacity. And I can't do anymore without additional help. Thank you.
Supervisor Bone and then Supervisor Bass.
Yeah, I'm going to withdraw my motion and I, and I want to apologize for my outburst. And I want to thank Supervisor Madron for trying to further my political career by trying to straight me out. So I appreciate that help there. But you guys make the motion and we'll see where it goes.
I need, I have a clarifying question, or maybe Virginia. I think you probably have a similar question. Well, you go.
That's probably not the same question, but maybe it is. So I guess I would ask the auditor controller, you know, the conditions that were placed and the one was the, to, you know, you needed help. I'm taking it, I, I'm going, so if we can bring consultants available to help you, is that not appropriate help and you actually need, feel that you need employees? What is, because I would like to think if we, this is a short-term thing. We could bring in resources to, you know, come to your aid. But I'm not sure if I'm on the same page as you. And I don't know if that was Supervisor Wilson's question or not. So that was my question. So through the chair, can the auditor controller answer that?
Please, Ms. Paz Dominguez.
Thank you. I am of the opinion that the existing county employees, the existing local workforce has the talents and the skills we need. Right now, you have paid or you have committed to pay $220,000 to Coa Hills and Bob Seston to do the work that you're asking me to do today. Something as simple as redirecting those appropriations would make it so that not only can I do the work that you're asking me to do, but also make sure that nothing else gets left behind. This timeline with the starting it in January, that was my idea because I understand payroll tax law and how it goes on the calendar year. Previously, this committee had decided to do it in October and then run both systems at the same time. It's not a good idea to do that. But it showed me that they're willing to do that. I want to help you. I want to commit to getting it done by January 1st. But my request for additional staff is for the chart of accounts restructuring, which means I have to, I have to give all of my energy to this, which means I'm not available for a cost plan. It means I'm not available for year end. I'm not available to address the audit findings. There's plenty of audit findings. I'm not available to assist other departments. I won't, I'm, I'm only one person. This chart of accounts project I had planned out for a two-year period. And now I'm being asked to do it in three months. So I, and.
Question related. Sorry to interrupt, but I'm just trying to clarify. Are you asking for permanent staff increases or a temporary staff increase? Because those are two very different things. Were related to the project or something long-term? And that's, that's what's not being made very clear in this conversation. And I want to make sure we're not getting this sort of like this dysfunctional absolutism. We really need to like get into where, what we need to get to.
And, and I will remind you Supervisor Wilson that allocating new staff or staff positions is not on the agenda today. However, if this is related to completing the general ledger mapping document, that is the agenda item and that's all we can talk about. Sorry about that.
May I answer the question?
Yes, please.
My apologies. Oh, great question. So what I've, I've actually learned this from the CAO in prior working conversations. This county allows for the temporary allotment of permanent employees. They can be on a contract basis. That would actually be perfect for accountants because accountants usually transition from different projects. And it would be great to find an accountant who can serve in a temporary position while being permanent. It didn't make sense to me either, but this is what this county allows. So that's the road I'm going to, where you have a contracted employee, a set amount of time that they would be employed and would come with all the benefits of a permanent employment. Because accounting is a very specialized skill and I'm, I've already tried to run extra help recruitments and we're not getting competitive qualified applicants. That's the clarification. I'm hoping it is a permanent.
I would leave, I mean, from my perspective, I would leave it up to the CAO to determine what that hiring structure or looks like and, and just offer that we, that we are offering the resource. The, the details of that, of that, of that arrangement, I think, is a little bit in the weeds in terms of like what, where we're trying to get to here today, which is to make sure that that resource is available. And so I don't know, I apologize for talking over you, Madam Chair.
That's fine, Supervisor Wilson. That's totally, I actually have a question for Treasury Tax Collector John Bartolome. You, I understand that you had something you wanted to address.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Chair Fennel. And I would urge the board to support the auditor controller in getting the help that she needs so she can focus on the chart of accounts. Because this is, is critical for this point going forward so that the payroll system works properly, excuse me, with finance enterprise. And, and she is in charge of that and, and she really needs to engage and do the chart of accounts. So I'm hoping that help can be given to her whereby some of the other responsibilities she is in charge of can be put off to a, a contract accountant or whatever. The second point I wanted to make has to do with request versus direct. I'm sorry to go into this, but the power of authority that each one of us has as officials for this county belongs to the county. It does not belong to us individually. So you, as your, as a board, is representing the county. And I believe it is appropriate to direct people in my position and throughout the county to get things done. Again, the power of authority belongs to the county. It does not belong to us as individuals. And I just wanted to leave it at that and also support Karen getting some help so she can engage properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasury Tax Collector Bartolome. CAO Nielsen?
I do, I do need a little clarification. First of all, Coa Hills, it, I just, Coa Hills is intended to assist payroll staff so they can participate in this transition to ADP. So the resources to the auditor controller would be in addition to. And so I want to make sure that your board understands that and that the direction to me is to, to, I will identify those resources. And I can bring an agenda item back to your board once those resources are identified. I just want you to be aware, that's an additional cost. And I, I can see nodding and that's fine. So I think that that helps with the clarification that I needed.
Thank you. Appreciate that, CAO Nielsen. I, I, with a tremendous amount of respect, and I think that this has been a great conversation. We really do have to think of ourselves as part of the whole, which is the county. As so, was put so well by Treasury Tax Collector Bartolome. It's our duty to make these changes, to, to move things forward, to work in collaboration. And I agree that the word "direct" is appropriate as it has been in terms of directing all department heads to be involved in the budget process, for instance, et cetera. So I think it's just to keep it clean. I do respect the Treasury Tax collectors making that clear for us. It seems to me that we have, the motion has been taken off the table. So if we want to continue discussing, we can. Or we can move forward with another motion if somebody is willing to make it. And in the interest of moving this forward, I'd like to see that happen. Again, going back to Supervisor Wilson.
Sure, I'll, I'll make an attempt at a motion here to see where we can, where we can get.
Okay.
I, I, I make a motion that we move forward with the staff recommendations with the following amendments. The first one is to strike from the staff report, the sentences or the sentence referenced by the auditor controller, and I think that's fine. We can, I don't have any issue with that. To include the auditor controller on the executive sponsorship committee. And assuming that, you know, we're going to be moving forward with her support. And, and then also ask the CAO to return with some, what resources would be required to assist the auditor controller in, in the effort to basically update the, the report that needs to get updated. I'm not gonna... I did mention before... Well, I'll just leave it at that, and then I'll speak to the motion.
I'll second it.
So in speaking of the motion, I did remove from my issue the timeline. I think that everybody will work to try and make the timeline that's been requested as for the reasons stated by both the Auditor Controller and staff. You know, we oft... Sometimes timelines are not met because of extenuating circumstances. And we can adjust if that's what happens. But we're all... I think we all really... If we're on the same team, we really got to work hard to try and make that happen. And I'm going to assume that the resources that we helped Auditor Controller with will help us get to that place. So that's my reasoning for those changes. And again, permanent staff is not on the agenda at this time. I mean, as much as I would like to see expansion of staff in this... In this... In the Auditor Controller's office as well as others in terms of other departments and the needs that are really there and the importance of those things. It's not on the agenda, and I can't really speak to that today. But I just want to make sure that we get to the finish line for a project, again, that we started in March. And I'm hoping that we can do that in a collaborative manner with respect and understanding that everybody here, even though we may differ on strategies to, you know, best serve the public and best serve our community, in the end, we all have the same goal, which is to basically have government function in a way that offers the most robust and efficient services to our community so that, you know, that... To be from my perspective, that they want more. You know, that this is... That we really deliver in that way. And I'm hoping that we can move forward in that spirit.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Wilson. Any further comments or discussion on this motion? Seeing that, I'll go to Ryan for a roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Chair Fennel. And just to be clear on the clerk of the boards, and we can't update that staff report as it's already came to the board. So if there... What has came to the board in this staff report will stay because that's the true record. If... In talking with counsel, I believe that if there needs to be an updated staff report, it will have to come at a future agenda date on the consent calendar. But your motion will be captured in the action summary. I just wanted clarity in the sense if anybody were to go back and look at this record, we would not be modifying the staff report in any way because it needs to be a true and transparent record.
The motion maker understands what you're saying. And if that's the way we have to do it, that's fine. Again, even in terms of the language that we are bringing up, whether to direct or whether to request, I really don't want to get us hung up on what a really dysfunctional absolutism. Like, we really need to work together and do what we can to find our consent... Find consensus as best we can and to move things forward. So in that spirit, I understand and accept that, what you're saying.
Thank you, Supervisor Wilson. I will call the roll call vote now.
Excuse me. Excuse me, Ryan. Supervisor Bone.
Can I get it read to me one more time so I understand where we're at?
Ryan?
I would ask Supervisor Wilson if he could reread it. I have that board approving the staff recommendation. And then Supervisor Wilson.
Yeah. So basically, it's staff recommendations with the... To ask that the staff report be amended and to come back at a future date on consent calendar to remove the portions of the staff report that was requested by the Auditor Controller. The second thing... What?
What are we removing? I'm sorry. I don't mean to be in the weeds, but we've been in them long enough now. It doesn't matter. What are we removing?
Yeah. Well, I mean, if the...
I will read to that sentence.
Okay, great.
If I can find it. Hold on a second here. It had something to do with... Well, it's going to take me a minute. But what I... The gist of it was that it had to do with the Auditor Controller dropping out of the process as soon as the choice was made for ADP.
And I believe there might have been a change to the timeline as well. I mean, not to getting the end, but on the list that was on the thing.
I just... And this is where the clarification... Are we dropping that because it's inaccurate? Or are we dropping it because we just want to do it? I just...
I believe dropping it because we have basically two viewpoints that are conflicting. And, you know, I'm not... And it's not... Again, it's not worth... It's not worth... I don't want to get into the dysfunctional absolutism. I just want to get us past the point where we... And I don't want to argue over who said what and what... If it's... If I can remove a sentence out of a report, then I'm willing to do that so that we can move forward. I'm not going to argue.
I just wondered why and what we were removing. I mean, I just... To vote on something blindly, it just is, you know, would be probably foolish.
Okay. So through the chair... Through the chair, it's page two, the fourth paragraph. I believe.
Thank you so much. Yes, I'll read that. I think I was... I have so much highlighted on here. Okay. So I think I believe... I think the sentence we're talking about here was, "It was not until the initial committee identified ADP as best positioned to be to county..." Let me see. "...that the AC began to withdraw from the process." Is that the sentence we're talking about? I think it is.
Is it? I just want to make sure. It sounds like we're not even sure.
Well, that's what I remember her saying.
We can ask the Auditor Controller if she'd like to specifically call out the sentence for us.
Okay. Let's ask the Auditor Controller.
Yes.
Ms. Pazimenges?
Yes, you are correct. That is the section that should be correct. Or I'm requesting to be correct.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
And then... So do we want that specifically read? Estelle, do you want to do that so that Supervisor Bone can get it?
Yes.
I've got it here. I've got it here. I just... It didn't seem like anybody knew. And why?
Then we'll move past that. We'll move past that. So the second thing on the list of amendments was the inclusion, if this doesn't already exist, in terms of the Auditor Controller on the Executive Sponsorship Committee. And then the third on the list was bring back an item so that the resources can be allocated to assist the Auditor Controller with the development of the required report. Those are my... My...
Development of the general ledger mapping document, right? Good.
Those are the three changes I'm requesting. I'm hoping that gets us to where we need to be so that we can move this project forward and, you know, hopefully free up some space for employees to do other things they really need to do too.
Okay. Are we now ready for the roll call vote? Seeing no objections. I will go back to Ryan. And thank you for helping doing your job and reminding everybody just how the record is kept. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair Fennel. Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
And Supervisor Fennel?
Yes.
Thank you. Pass this five oh.
Thank you very much. And good luck to everybody moving forward with this important improvement to our payroll function. Appreciate representatives from ADP being here today to add clarity to this and really appreciate the presentation by Human Resources. Thank you. And the project manager. So this brings us to the last item on the agenda, which is our closed session. We'll go to Counsel Billingsley. And then we also are going to be adjourning today in memory of two community individuals. So I will do that after we hear from counsel and public comment on that agenda item. Counsel Billingsley.
Thank you, Chair. It's the intention of the board to meet in closed session on two items pursuant to Government Code 54957, to consider public employee appointment, one, for the position of Director of Library Services, and two, for the position of County Counsel.
Thank you. And we'll go to a public comment on this item. We have one public comment ending in number... Ending in 3053. I think you might need to press star six. Thank you.
Sorry, Thomas Mulder here. I tried raising my hand again because you guys were way outside on the last agenda item. I don't have anything to comment on these ones.
Thank you. So seeing that, we now are... I'm looking at my notes here. I'm going to go both to Supervisor Bone and to Supervisor Bass. Today, we are going to adjourn in memory of Don Miller and also of Laurie Lazio. Lauren Lazio, sorry.
Yes, we could probably...
So I'll go to you first.
We could probably talk on both. I'll... Don Miller, you know, the mainstay in downtown McKinleville. Don's been a friend of mine. I started doing business with him over 40 years ago. Him and his brother Dick, Miller Farms. I mean, they had so many different operations going on and were the center and the heartbeat. And, you know, them and Opie and everything else backed up most of the philanthropic operations going on. And there's a few young guys taking that position over from him. But I don't think you're ever going to replace somebody like Don Miller. And so my condolences go... He was so instrumental in me building the ball fields. Never sent me a bill. I just gave him money, and we worked it out. But I can't say enough good things. And then I know Virginia wants to say some things about Laurie. And I was just dealing with Laurie a few months ago because his son, who's a veteran, was trying to get some materials, kind of upgrade the canteen at the Veterans Hall because we put their pool table and stools in a container, and it got water damaged. So got a couple of friends and bought a couple of new pool tables and 30 new stools. And that was because Laurie asked if I could help raise some money and made a couple of phone calls and just got it done for Laurie and his son. So he was still worried about our community up until his last few days. And so him to his son and to his daughters, they were having bonfires up until his passing. And he'd come out and tell Lazio stories. So I really... To the family and everything else. And I'll let Virginia talk about the seafood and restaurant empire yet.
It is an awful lot to cover there. And yeah, and actually with Don Miller, too. It's like all these people I remember growing up with waiting on for years. And when it comes to Laurie and his family, I think a lot of people know he's part of the famed Alioto family in San Francisco. He's at Ty's. If you were to look at the LaCascas outpost and read everything he did, it's like, I had no idea. But I had more of my experiences with him when it came to the restaurant business. I think Lazio's and O-H has existed pretty much simultaneously through many years. And I remember fires and other things. And he's just always, always kept going on new directions. I remember when he ran for supervisor. Of course, I thought he was crazy. But that's just what restaurant people do. They want to help, and they want to get involved. And I always loved his energy. And I think his favorite thing I can leave people with is fishing. You know, he would take so many people out on the rivers. And I recall he even knew Chuck Yeager.
Yeah. He was... That was his annual fishing buddy.
Yeah. And so if you actually looked at the list of his fishing buddies, and someone was like, wow, really? And I learned even looking at this, I did not know he was, you know, president of a lot of different organizations. And he was involved in the Restaurant Association way before I was. So he was just an amazing person. His whole family has been so dedicated, as Supervisor Bone mentioned. And I, you know, I really want them to know our thoughts are with them because Humboldt County lost a force and to be reckoned with. And I think Laurie will be incredibly missed. But boy, he sure left a lot of good stories.
Thank you both, Supervisor Bass and Supervisor Bone. Again, we'll be adjourning in memory of Don and Laurie when we come back from our closed session. I do want to ask Counsel Billingsley, any idea of how long that closed session is going to take?
I was going to defer to Director Lee, as I'm not aware. But I would guess half an hour.
Okay, thank you. So we'll be... Does anyone want a break before we go into that? Or we go directly in? Let's go directly in since I didn't see any hands. You had two minutes earlier.
Just five minutes for a restroom break, please. I mean, appreciate it.
Okay. Five minutes from now, we'll be in a closed session. And then we'll be back in around... Let's go for it. Okay. So Counsel Billingsley, we're back from closed session. Counsel Billingsley, anything to report on?
Thank you, Chair. On item L1, there's no reportable action. And on item L2, I am informed that there is no reportable action.
Thank you, Counsel Billingsley. And again, just for the record, we did memorialize this earlier. But we are adjourning today in memory of Don Miller and Laurie Lazio.
Thanks.